You can submit a city service request quickly and easily by downloading the MyCC 311 app on your phone. Reporting street problems, tall grass, gas or water issues, or other concerns is simple on the 311 app. Just choose from a list of services, add a photo, answer a few short questions, mark your location, and hit submit. Everything you need in just a few minutes. Life is made easy with 311. Download the MyCC 311 app today.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for joining us here at City Hall and in Council Chambers. This morning, I'd like to call this meeting to order first and foremost, and then invite our Chaplain Rodney Appleby with our Corpus Christi Fire Department to give the invocation. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Please join me for a word of prayer. Oh, Lord God, we come before you this day, giving you thanks. We thank you, Lord, for being a God of mercy and love, and for being with us in this very room. We also give you thanks, oh Lord, for making each one of us, every citizen of this great city, and every other city in your image, with dignity and worth. I thank you, Lord, for these, your servants, our mayor, our city manager, our city staff, and our city council members. I thank you, Lord, for their service, for the service they provide for the citizens of our beautiful city, and for their willingness to give unselfishly of themselves their time and their gifts for many. We pray, Lord, for your wisdom, for your strength, and for courage to make decisions that are right and good and pleasing to you. May your presence be felt here today, and always as you guide and lead those you have chosen to lead the city of Corpus Christi. We thank you again, oh Lord, for our mayor, city staff, and city council, and for all of those who work diligently and honorably to make this place we all call home so wonderful. In the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much. And our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the Texas state flag will be led by Arnaldo Duran. He is a junior at Harold T. Branch Academy and part of the National Technical Honor Society.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please join me in honoring the Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Arnaldo, and good luck. City Secretary Ms. Fuerta, would you please call roll?
Mayor Paulette Wahagdo, present. Councilmembers Roland Barera.
Here.
Sylvia Campos.
Present.
Gil Hernandez.
Here.
Michael Hunter.
Here.
Jim Klein.
Here.
Mike Pasley.
Everett Roy.
Present.
Dan Suckly.
Here.
City Manager Peter Zanoni.
Present.
City Attorney Miles Rizley.
Mayor and Council, a quorum of the council, and the required charter officers are present to conduct the meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Fuerta. Okay, so we'll go to Section E, and this is our city manager's comments and update on city operations. Mr. Zanoni.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, members of the council, good morning. We have several items on the city manager report this morning. And the first two deal with our police services area, our police department. And so the first one is the Top Cop Award. And just to give you some background, there's a National Association of Police Organizations, and we're a member of that. It's a coalition of police unions and associations from across the country. Each year, the National Association of Police Organizations recognizes the heroism and bravery of law enforcement officers nationwide at their annual Top Cop Awards Dinner in Washington, DC. So members of federal, state, county, and local agencies nationwide nominate their partners and colleagues for actions that are above and beyond the call of duty for this Top Cop Award. Officers from 10 national cases are selected as top cops, so just 10 in the entire country each year are selected. In addition to that, one case is selected in which an honorable mention is offered to either officer or officers. So there's two distinctions, the Top Cop Award and then Honorable Mention. Corpus Christi Police Department has officers recognized in both categories. So we take both awards for the state of Texas. That's pretty impressive. Yeah. And so officer, we want to recognize those officers this morning, all three of whom are not here. Some are actually in the hospital, but we do have their pictures. And we want to thank the officers who are with us in the back today to recognize their colleagues. So Officer Gustavo Medina was named as the 2023 Top Cop for his actions in December of last year. You can see his picture here. While on patrol, Officer Medina responded to a call for assistance for the Nuasis County Sheriff's Office pursuing a stolen vehicle on SBID. You may remember that case. Officer Medina chased a suspect who opened fire on him, on our police officer. Medina returned fire, and both sustained gunshot wounds and were transported to the local hospital. And Officer Medina, as I mentioned, is still recovering from that incident. And you can see his picture there, as I mentioned. And then our 2023 Top Cop Honorable Mention winners for the state, as I mentioned, both from here and Corpus Christi. That includes Senior Officer Brandon Cordell and Paul Lizewinski. In June of 2021, the officers were dispatched to a neighborhood for suspect burglizing vehicles. And upon their arrival, the suspect fired several shots at the officers, striking Officer Cordell. Though injured, Cordell joined Officer Liewinski in returning fire and striking the suspect, who later died. Senior Officer Cordell is back at work, but Officer Medina is still recovering from the injuries from the gunshot. So we want to take, I want to take, this whole Council Chambers wants to take this time to thank these officers and all the members of the Corpus Christi Police Department who are here with us this morning and working our community right now. To thank the officers who take the oath to protect residents of Corpus Christi even though they place their lives in danger. So please join me in congratulating them for this recognition. And Mayor, our police chief is here. I don't want to put him on the spot, but if you want to, you want to say a few words, Chief? Just because this is a pretty big deal. I mean, we, Corpus Christi gets both the awards for the whole state of Texas, and one of which is the National Top Cop Award. Only 10 officers acknowledged in the whole country.
That's correct.
Yes, sir.
Unfortunately, Officer Medina is, hopefully, his last surgery. I do want to thank several of you, Mayor, Council, Peter, took the time to call and visit with our officers. And that means so much that they got the, they get this type of support from their community and their leadership in this community. It's, it warms the heart to know, and it warms, and our officers know it. They feel it. The Top Cop Award is, as you said, Peter, it was a very good presentation. I appreciate that. As you said, is recognition of bravery and honor. And, you know, we train in those things that protect lives, not just community lives, but our own lives. And God forbid, it has to come to use, but when it does, we want to survive it. We want to send these officers home to their family. And that's what happened in these instances, these officers. We're proud of each other. We support each other. We love each other. We love this community, and we're very, very proud that you've taken the time to recognize that, those accomplishments. And it's nice to know that, you know, we sometimes, at the end of the road here, 127 miles from the next largest city, we think we're isolated, but as you see, the nation's watching, right? So this is a national award. This is something that folks in Washington see, right, and present. And that's where this presentation happened, at Memorial Week in Washington, DC. So it's a, it's a great honor for our department and for these officers.
Yeah, that's wonderful.
Yeah, thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief Markle.
Yeah, that's great. Any comments, Mayor? I'm going to move to the next topic.
Well, I would just like to say, we congratulate them, and what you just said is absolutely, you know, it's just right on. And I think that you've said this before, we have such a stellar team in our police department. We have 20 new, right? Three women, four women? Four, right? Was it three? Okay, three women out of the 20 are now on the streets. And so it's all the leadership and the culture. So thank you for that leadership, FTOs, the training staff, everyone. But for today's commendation to those officers, we really, we really take our hats off to them because of the courage and everything that they display in protecting this community for Corpus Christi. So thank you, and thank you to them.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. And we're going to continue our theme of public safety with our police department. We want to recognize the 82nd Police Academy graduation that took place this past Friday on May 19th at Texas A&amp;M Corpus Christi Performing Arts Center. We know that the mayor, Councilman Suckly, and Councilman Hernandez, and Councilman Klein were able to join us at this graduation. It was a really nice graduation. As the chief said, this team of 20 officers really bonded together well in their eight months' worth of training. So the 82nd Police Academy started in October of 2022, and there were 22 cadets. On May 19th, this past Friday, 20 of those cadets were sworn officers to the Corpus Christi Police Department. So we're proud that we continue to add police officers. Many are struggling across the state and nation, either willingly, they don't want to add police officers, or people don't want to work for those locations. This just demonstrates yet again that this community embraces our police officers. Graduating 20 puts us at capacity almost. The next academy class, as the chief was telling me this morning, will have us at full, full strength, 491 officers filled. So under the leadership of Chief Markle and his command staff, the Corpus Christi Police Department has created a diverse workforce, as the mayor just said, reflective of the makeup of our community. Of the 20 graduates, three were women, police officers. And we really lead the trend in making sure our workforce is diverse when it comes to our police officers. If we look at the, all the police officers, we have a strong majority of women police officers. Many in the state called this chief up and say, "How do you do that anyway, chief?" And so we don't tell them our secret, but we're glad that we have diversity in our workforce. So family plays a big part in law enforcement, and four of the cadets had relatives and public safety. And they were there at the graduating ceremony, including persons from our own police department, from the fire department, and then from the US military as well. So making it to the graduation for those cadets is not an easy task, as we said Friday. The new officers spend over 1,000 hours in the classroom, learning local, state, and federal laws. They took place in vigorous physical training and spent 108 hours in firearms training as well. I am proud to say that the Corpus Christi Police Department possesses a relationship of trust and confidence with our community. And that's probably the secret right there, that we trust them, we have confidence in them, and the same with them to the community. So in February, just some additional background on training. In February, the city council, after their approval, we broke ground on a $28 million police training academy, the first in the city's history, at Delmar College, the new Oso Bay, an Oso Creek campus. This demonstrates our commitment not only to public safety, but to the men and women who ensure it. So since fiscal year 2009, just some background, too, to show how much we care about our public safety professionals, the city council has allocated $406 million to public safety since 2009. With those funds, we've been able to bring the sworn count to 491 police officers, reversing years and years of not adding police officers. In fact, we've added 45 police officer positions in four years, beating what would have been the recommendation of 25 in five. We've also remodeled the Flower Bluff Police Substation. That's a beautiful beacon of the police presence there. We've equipped offices with vehicles, body armor, weapons, support equipment, and uniforms. And we've also investigated in equipment and facility upgrades and new investigative tools as well, including in this budget. So we, if you weren't able to make it, and if you haven't seen much on social media, we do have a video that we want to show you. This is produced by one of our own at the police department, Travis Pace, and then our communications department helped to condense it to this video here. So we're going to show that right now.
We graduated 20 cadets, swore they're men as new police officers. They just finished seven months of pretty vigorous training to enter into the next phase of field training, which is another six months. And at the end of that six months, they'll go through a process where they are evaluated as a solo officer. I expect them to embrace our culture, to embrace our community, to be service-oriented, to be problem solvers. We work closely with our community, and I expect them, and I know they will, embrace that philosophy. It's no small feat to get into our academy. We go through hundreds and hundreds of applicants, end up with 20. They actually graduate from the academy. So they've been filtered through a whole lot of folks to get to where they are now. So it's no small feat. And I'm very, very proud that they are where they are, and I hope they continue on through their field training program and keep working as hard as they've had to work up until now. And if they do, I know they'll be successful. Our city has been growing for years. We had been stagnant in our police officer role growth, but that's changed over the last several years with this, this council, this mayor, and the city management. We work hard to provide superior service for our community, and the growth is needed. It's been, it's been needed, and we're getting there now. I'd like to thank our city leadership, our city manager, and all of our community for supporting our growth, supporting our police department. It takes, it takes vision, and it takes a lot of work, not just within the police department, but within the city, our mayor, our council, our city manager, to make these things happen. The leadership, we have now understand that, and I am so very thankful for it.
Chief, that was a great video. We were expecting some of that heavy rock music that you had in the.
But we also have to, we have to commend Travis. I don't know, is Travis here?
Is he here? Where's Travis?
Is he not here? He's not here, but Travis makes the best video. That was a great video. But the video he makes for every academy graduation is really stellar. So congrats to Travis on another wonderful video last week.
Yes. Mayor, just a couple more comments here. There were several cadets, as we saw last Friday, that received special achievement awards. I just want to highlight them here because they worked hard to get these, these achievements. So Nathan Martinez was a cadet with the highest grade point average, I think 93 point something, Chief. Noah Robinson scored the highest in three physical fitness tests during the academy. Randy Solis received the highest score during firearms training. And then Alejandro Betancor had the highest score in drive training. And then finally, Noah Robinson received the Distinguished Matthew Thibodeau Award, which is an all-around, well-rounded individual. And again, we want to thank Chief Markle and the training staff. Mayor and the council members that were there saw how well orchestrated just the graduation event was. Many of those same persons that did that are the trainers that train our cadets to police officers. So Chief has a great team, training our public safety professionals, and a great team managing us through the graduation. So I'm confident to say, as we've heard already several times here this morning, that we have one of, if not the best, police departments anywhere in the country, and we're proud of them. So Mayor, that concludes the two comments on public safety. I'm going to switch to a public health item now, unless there's any comments. Okay, Councilman Pasley?
Councilman Pasley?
Mayor, thank you very much. Just real quickly, and Peter, you were listing the things that the council has approved. And on behalf of Councilman Roy and myself, I also want to note that in the budget last year, we appropriated money to start looking at finding a piece of property to build a police substation out in northwest Corpus Christi, and all of us who live out there are very excited about having that and having a police presence in our area. So looking forward to that.
Yeah, great. Thank you for reminding us of that, Councilman. We also have one on the deep south side and in City Council District 5. So the model that many cities have moved to years and years ago is to decentralize the downtown headquarters because the cities are so big geographically. We're catching up on that. So Flower Bluff was the first one. And it gives the officers a place to check in, to do their command, roll call in the morning. But it also serves as a community focal point where community members can come in and meet their persons that protect them every day, or just come in and get, ask questions, get reports. So it's a great model. We'll have one, we do have one in Flower Bluff, the one in McAllen, and then also one in the deep south side. And we'll probably have to add a few more as time progresses, but thank you for acknowledging that. Okay, Mayor and Council, so we want to switch to, we know that public safety is important in our community, and so is public health and physical fitness for our community. So we want to let you know, if you haven't seen already, about the city's first-ever Safe, Fun, Fit Endurance Fest, which will be, which was, which was developed to celebrate the third anniversary of Safe, Fun, Fit at the bayfront. The Endurance Fest will be next weekend, so you still have time to get trained up and hydrated up. The Endurance Fest will be Friday, June 2nd, through Sunday, June 4th, at Water's Edge along our scenic bayfront. Endurance Fest, a keynote here, is it's for all ages and all fitness levels, and it features four running events and one cycling event. The three-day event will include live music, food, refreshments, awards, and many door prizes as well. So just some background, this is the, again, it's a celebration of three years of what this city has done, which is Safe, Fun, Fit. And Safe, Fun, Fit was launched in June of 2020 during the COVID-19 pandemic. There was an effort to increase outdoor physical activity and promote a healthier Corpus Christi, even though we were recommending people to stay indoors. We said, "You know what? We could get people outside, at least breathing some of the fresh air and staying physically fit." That new Health and Wellness Initiative took place along the bayfront, and it has been every Saturday, unless weather canceled it, from 7:00 AM to 11:00 AM. It's still running. It's the longest-running free public health program in the state of Texas. And since its inception, Safe, Fun, Fit has continued to thrive in the community. It has offered over 300 fitness classes and over 50 5 and 10K runs along the bayfront. We do want to give special thanks to Representative, State Representative Todd Hunter for sponsoring those 5 and 10K runs. He, he funds them, basically. The sponsorship is a payment to the, to the operators who do the timing and the medals. So thank you, State Rep Todd Hunter, who, I might add, is also a participant in just about all of these, unless he's up in Austin. And is a first-place placement in his age category, so. Right, so today, Safe, Fun, Fit has helped more than 12,000 people reach their daily aerobic activity. 12,000 people have been helped to reach that aerobic activity as recommended by the Department of Health and Human Services. So on Friday, this brings us to our celebration. On Friday, June 2nd, next week, Friday, the inaugural Endurance Fest will kick off at 6:30 PM with an evening run downtown along Shoreline Boulevard. And it's called our 5K Glow Run Walk. It's for all ages. That 5K equates to 3.1 miles. It's going to be real unique. You can see in some of the pictures here. There'll be a nighttime run. There'll be glowing apparatus that individuals will have on, and it's pretty unique. I think it's one of the first here in our community. So that's Friday. On Saturday, beginning at 7:00 AM, persons can test their endurance with our longest, with our longer-distance events. There's a 10K and then a two-person half marathon relay. So that two-person half relay is 13 miles. The 10K is 6.2 miles. So on Saturday, two, two running events. This run takes you along the iconic Ocean Drive, and there'll be plenty of support along the course, to include water and other support. On Saturday, also on Saturday, our Health District, Nuasis County, City of Corpus Christi Public Health District, will be having a health fair downtown from 8:00 to 12:00 o'clock at Water's Edge. People can come in to get health checkups, health information. We want to thank Dr. Khan for having her team be available. And then on Sunday, on June 4th, that's when we'll have our On the Edge Cycling Tour, that we're referring it to as. I'll be out there with the cyclists. That begins at 7:30 AM. It's a real neat, real unique course. There'll be 10 and 18-mile right, 10 and 18-mile routes if you stop kind of not, if you don't do the full route. But those will be along Ocean Drive. We did get permission, and we want to thank them, NAS Corpus Christi. They're going to allow us to ride through the base, and then we'll continue all the way down to Flower Bluff at Laguna Shores Boulevard to check out the beautiful views there from the Laguna Madre. So all the way down and then all the way back up is the Endurance Fest, and that concludes at about 10:30. The bike ride will conclude around 10:30. Also, on Sunday, 10:30, that will conclude the Endurance Fest, and we have a special, what we're calling a trifecta award. And so anyone that participates and signs up in three of the events will get that award regardless of their time. So registration is open. We already have close to 600 participants registered. We are, we are shooting for 1,200. Our goal is 1,200, so we're about halfway there with two weeks to go. We have participants, obviously, from Corpus Christi, but also from Houston, from Austin, San Antonio, and McAllen, Texas. So patrons can register, and we want them to, especially here locally, all ages. They can register at vfitproductions.com. Again, all ages, all endurance levels, come out and support our community and the goal of public health for our community. So we do have a video that we want to show real quick, and then we'll wrap this one up. I think, or is there, maybe there isn't a bit?
Lace up your shoes and air up your tires for the Safe, Fun, Fit Endurance Fest. This three-day event takes place on June 2nd, 3rd, and 4th at the Water's Edge Park downtown. Light up the night during the 5K Glow Run on Friday, June 2nd at 6:30 PM. Test your endurance in the 10K Half Marathon and Relay on Saturday, June 3rd, starting at 7:00 AM. And ride out the weekend with the On the Edge Bike Tour, Sunday, June 4th at 7:30 AM. Sign up today at vfitproductions.com. Stay active, stay healthy, stay fit at Safe, Fun, Fit Endurance Fest.
Great, just a short little commercial. That's actually airing on Chris 6, and because of that, we've received a lot of registrants who acknowledge that. So the events align, as I mentioned, with our mission to provide and expand programs that positively impact the health of our residents here in Corpus Christi. We're committed to ensuring that residents' health continues to improve. That was the goal in the new Health District model. These events that promote community wellness are for all fitness levels, and we look forward to having everybody there. Again, the Endurance Fest is a, is a celebration of three years of Safe, Fun, Fit, which is the longest-running free community fitness event that takes place every Saturday. And so the Endurance Fest next Friday, Saturday, Sunday, there'll be more than just physical fitness activities. There'll be music and food and awards, and we'll have several of the council members there as well who can meet the community. So Mayor, that concludes three of the four. We do have a little, a longer public water supply projects update, but you may want to go to public comment first, and then we'll come back with Mike Murphy, who I've asked to give the city council an update on all of our water projects that we're working on to ensure more water supply for our community.
Great. Let's do that. Mr. Rizley.
Citizens are authorized and encouraged to present their views to the council on city-related matters. However, such should be done in a factual, precise presentation and questions of council or staff. and questions of council or staff are inappropriate. Loud, boisterous, profane, or obscene language or behavior is not allowed.
Thank you, Mr. Riesley. So individuals will be called upon in order in which they signed up electronically. In-person public comments will be taken first, followed by virtual public comment. Corpus Christi residents will take precedence over non-residents. And for those commenting in person, I would like to remind everyone that a recording is being made of the meeting. Please speak into the microphone located at the podium and state your name and address prior to speaking. There are two opportunities in which you can speak on an agenda item. The first is now, and the second, or first if you make it, would be at the time we actually hear the agenda item. But you can, if you would please choose one, that is what is allowed. Citizen comments are limited to three minutes, while non-resident comments are limited to one minute. And for those commenting in person, there is a timer beneath the base of the microphone, and it will let you know exactly how much time you have left to speak. Once the time is up, the buzzer will go off, at which time we would appreciate the conclusion of your comment. If you have a petition or any information that you would like to distribute to the council, if you'll please hand it to Ms. Huerta, and she will distribute it to us before you speak. So with that, we'll start with Mr. Steve Klepper.
Mayor, council members, Mr. Zanoni, you've got the, what you've got in your hands if it's passed out, last, at the end of the public comments last time, Councilman Pusly requested the city manager to give a briefing on water rates and stormwater rates. Not what they are, but more how they come to be and what's the basis for their structure. And so what this is, is a briefing of the briefing that I would like to see, or some suggestions. There are some questions in there that I think that should be answered. And I start with a little screenshot there of what's called M1. And anytime you talk about water rates, you'll be hearing about M1. And it's not all that complicated, really. But it's just more high-level concepts on what water rates should be, how they should be structured. And I highlighted a quote from the intro there, that raw water, the water rate should be based upon the relationships of the cost to serve the customers. And that's what the middle part is all about. And I start there with the first, what's fair, it says clearly what should be fair and equitable. The bottom left, I have a little chart. This is similar to what I presented in the mid-'90s when I was doing briefings for the council, for city manager. But for each rate class, what are the costs, and how do those costs provide services, and what are the revenues associated? Simple little bar charts, that's all we really need. And by customer classes, that's why I put the water rate schedule in there. And that's on the second side there. And you'll see the different customer categories. And those are the rate classes, basically. For the four, there are four members of the council that were not on the council when last year's contract was approved for the water rate model. And so there's, that's another good reason to have the briefing now. You'll see some comments, some questions on the bottom right, on what water rates. The backside addresses stormwater. And a lot of you may not know, and I congratulate the city manager for finally getting a dedicated stormwater fee. You might not know, in 1995, we were trying to do that very same thing. Structured a little differently, actually quite a bit differently, but still, congratulate him for getting it done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Klepper. Sean Flanagan. And then we'll have Lynn Woods, Alberto Carillo, Patricia Reinhardt, and Michael Ridgers. If you could all come up a little closer to the front, that would be appreciated.
My name is Sean Flanagan. I live at 4218 Herndon Street. On four previous occasions, I've given you valid reasons why we do not want nor need a Department of Environmental Sustainability. I've just given you a multi-page article that I hope serves as a red pill for you. Well, what does being red-pilled mean? If you've been red-pilled, you've realized your eyes have been opened, and you realize you've been lied to. What you thought was real is not. The article gives 48 separate occasions when experts throughout the last 40 or 50 years have predicted environmental disaster, and they've been wrong every time. Also, these folks keep changing their goalposts of disaster. First, it was Ice Age, then a population bomb, then global warming, then climate change, and now environmental climate justice. Wrong every time. Because environmental sustainability is not about science or the environment. It's about scaring the heck out of people so they'll give up their freedom, give up their God-given individual rights so that we are not wiped out by tidal waves caused by melting glaciers or whatever fraud they're currently pushing, such as their latest, that our gas stoves are going to kill us all. This is a cult. The environmental sustainability cult is a Marxist-derived cult. Like other world cults, such as communism, it requires everyone buy into the illusion. The cult leaders use that nice term, sustainability. They use fear to get folks to tear up our own constitution, to allow them the power to impose their utopia of sustainability on us all. Here's the deal. There is no utopia. Their solutions do not work as they are not based in reality. They are based on whatever they think they can get enough people to believe. And then reality breaks in on them, so they got to keep moving the goalposts. Now, talk so much about Ice Ages anymore these days, do they? We have enough cultists in the federal EPA and the state equivalent EPA to deal with. We do not need to empower sustainability cultists right here in Corpus Christi. Read the article when you have time. See what a fraud environmental sustainability really is. You can't be wrong that many times and still have a shred of credibility. They are pushing illusion, not reality. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Flanagan. Lynn Woods.
My name is Lynn Woods. I am a business owner, multiple property owner here in Corpus. Been here since 1964. And I want to thank you all for what you've done for our city.
Sir, can you state your address, please, also? Your address for the record. State your address for the record, please, sir.
926 Rosedale. I'm sorry. I wear hearing aids, and they're, they just got broke. I want to pick up where Sean left off a little bit, because what he didn't mention is the people who were behind the sustainability. Can we do a better job on what we're doing? Everyone knows we can. We always can. But the political agenda behind the sustainability group will devastate our city. I am a chaplain that goes on these ships every week. I'm in the refining sector every week. Part of their agenda is to get rid of carbon emissions. You look at our refineries, what are we doing? Oil and gas. They want to get rid of oil and gas. That means we can't load ships. It means those ships can't come in. We lose our port ministry. Another part of what their aspect is, when you let them in the door, is they want to reduce our military 50%. Just think of what our city would be like if we did not have our naval air station, if we could not operate our port efficiently as it is now, if we didn't have the refining section. I mean, it's a Trojan horse, and I really have appreciated my city and the city council over the years because you never rush into anything real fast. Sometimes I go, why aren't they moving? And afterwards, I'm going, thank God, y'all didn't move fast. Do your great due diligence on sustainability. Can we do better? Absolutely. Is it a political agenda? Absolutely. So when you're considering that, get down to the bottom line. What is best for our city? Other cities, do they have something we can adopt that works? As long as we're not interfering with our refinery, our shipping, our oil and gas, which is what their baseline agenda is to do, there's things that we can do in this city that will help. So I'm just encouraging you, do great due diligence when you consider what direction we're going to take for our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Woods. Alberto Carillo.
Good afternoon. Alberto Carillo, 4055 Calarmette, District 3. You're being distributed a handout, and it has to do with the GLO, Texas General Land Office. I'm here in support and echoing the gentleman that just spoke. As a member of, actually, one of the, or employed by one of the companies along the channel for 42 years, I can tell you that we, as a business, take a tremendous pride in dealing with environmental issues. Beginning in 1981 to present, I can tell you, and I'm talking about the company that I'm with, neighbors to the left, neighbors to the right, folks across the aisle, or across the channel, we have made tremendous strides. So why are we here? I think this all started, I think, or maybe prior to April 6th. Possible preservation methods for the restoration methods regarding the oil spill. Okay, I get it. I come from that world. Spoke about the oil spill issue and the expand, and expanded that to speaking about the need for a city environmental staff. That caught my attention. Spoke of the city council retreat where the council members and the city managers discussed the need for environmental staffing. When I saw this, and I reviewed, and I've, in recent weeks, listening in, I'm thinking, this group, which I'm sure has good intentions, Watershore and Beach Advisory Committee. Okay, good. I don't know if these gentlemen, ladies, understand that there's already a group that can address and tackle, and tackle these issues. The GLO, they're free, or they're not free, we've already paid the taxes, but the need to build in another subset here in the city at our expense, with the tax dollars that we're already spending. Never mind that 17% of our population is in poverty. Never mind that we, as a city, are below average of the U.S. Census and the Texas per capita and household incomes. We simply can't afford this, guys. On top of a fiscal year budget of $1.4 billion. And you want to add this to that? Think about it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Carillo. Patricia Reinhardt.
I have a presentation, and I don't know how that gets on here, but I spoke with Mary Ann, who was very helpful. Can the technology department please put that, oh, here we go. Okay. So my name is Patricia Reinhardt, and I live at 317 Clifford Street, Corpus Christi, Texas. And the, I don't, I need to advance these. Is there, how do you do that on here?
Do they do it, or?
We need to, I need to advance these.
No, she's going to check on it. I think they'll, they'll do it for you.
Okay, I'd like to refute the argument that we do not need an environmental services plan or sustainability plan. That's almost funny to me. I would like to, once again, draw your attention to the fact of illegal dumping within, yes?
Ma'am, you can just say, next slide, and then they'll advance it.
Okay, next slide. Next slide. This is one of, this is in Corpus Christi. This is a dumpster behind Portair Shopping Center, and I have been in contact with their management. And I don't know what will be next on that. Next slide. More dumpsters in Corpus Christi in the same general area. Next slide. Pizza boxes and whatnot, but every restaurant in that shopping center has a big wrap box by the doors, which is disgusting. Next slide. More dumpster. Next. This is a sack full of rotting meat. Next. More garbage. Next. This is probably the CVS at 3205 South Alameda, which is consistently like this, and which manager refuses to do anything in support of cleaning that mess up. Next. Next. This is near Southernlands, a big cart full of garbage that becomes ambient. Next. Okay. I would like to say that what would probably be prudent is if the code enforcement, the police, somebody would go to the source of this egregious and disgusting pollution. Corpus Christi has a pollution problem. Visible pollution damages her reputation and harms your efforts at heads in beds. Tourism seeks affordable beauty, comfort, and escape, and rejects airborne reminders of potential global climate crises. So I would suggest that to do a little more efficient job and so on, that the enforcement departments go to the stores. Stop Big Ben plastic spills from retail dumpsters at CVS, Michael's, Portair Shopping Center, and all the others. I suggest that you mandate making dumpsters completely inaccessible to wind, animal, and people. Go to the source. If bins are spilling even one piece of plastic, they need to be fined and quickly, and they need to be fined hard. This is unacceptable. They reap the profits of doing business in our community. They take those profits back to their corporate headquarters, wherever they may be, and they leave our taxpayers to clean up after them. So I suggest that we go to the stores. Taxpayers pick up the cost for these open bin doors and sliding glass doors left unclosed. When we talk about city health, this is where we need to go. This is completely uncivilized and unacceptable. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reinhardt. Mr. Zanoni, are we addressing this? From last time she was here, we mentioned it.
Right. So co-compliance is aware, and I'm not sure about, because she had a lot of pictures. I don't know every case, but there is, co-compliance has a protocol that...
Well, good, there's a bottomless well of this stuff here.
Yeah. Thank you. But I want to specifically, I mean, she, this is the second time she's here, and it's the same issue.
Well, some of it's on, right, and some of it, not to interrupt, sorry, Mayor, some of it's on private person's property, and that, you know, the city doesn't regulate necessarily what people do on their property, to the extent it's not visible. But, well, as I mentioned, Constance, who is our interim code, Constance Sanchez, our chief financial officer, who's our interim co-compliance director until June 1, has worked with her and will continue to do so.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Reinhardt. Michael Ridgers.
Good morning. My name is Michael Ridgers. I live at 5918 South Oso Parkway here in Corpus Christi. The Certificate of Obligation Act of 1971 was never intended to be an unlimited credit card for municipalities to finance anything that they wanted to do without voter approval. The act was designed to give municipalities some flexibility to finance emergency repairs and such to infrastructure and public utilities, and to make repairs caused by a calamity such as a storm. They were not designed to make improvements to golf courses and city council chambers. COs are for items that can't wait for an election to seek voter approval. In 2021, you borrowed $2.3 million, $2.3 million for golf course improvements. In this CO, you list another $1.2 million for Gable Zano Golf Course. This is not emergency spending. In 2022, you borrowed $5,360,000 for a police training academy. In this CO, you list $6.3 million for a police training academy. These are not rush items such that you need to authorize a certificate of obligation. These are not rush items such that you need to authorize a certificate of obligation. These are items that need to go before the voters. In 2021, you authorized almost $7 million in city hall upgrades and various facility improvements. In 2022, you spent an additional $3.5 million on city hall improvements. Now you want to borrow another $1 million to redecorate the city council chambers, and that $1 million is to come from the Certificates of Obligation Fund. What is that? COs are supposed to be item-specific. There should not be a certificates of obligation slush fund that you can just reach into when you need some extra cash. The current tab for certificates of obligation, which had no voter input, is over $80 million. You now want to add another $15 million to that tab, and an additional $1 million for improvements to these city council chambers. This practice across the state has come to the attention of the legislature, and there has been legislation put forward which will significantly curb your ability to spend taxpayer money frivolously. It may not get enough, it may not get through legislature during this session, but I can assure you that there are many citizens who are just now finding out about this method of financing pet projects. There's absolutely no excuse for heaping the expense onto the backs of taxpayers hundreds of millions of dollars in principle and interest for projects that did not get a vote.
Thank you, Mr. Ridgers. Maggie Peacock.
Alrighty, hi all, Maggie Peacock, 1773 Ennis Jocelyn Road. So, what is a sustainable city? If you just do a simple Google search on that exact question, this is exactly what pops up. A sustainable city reduces environmental impacts through its activities and promotes sustainable consumption and production patterns in accordance with its own territorial, geographical, social, economic, and cultural conditions. This is what it means for our city. We are a region dominated by heavy industry. That's that. However, since this is what our economy is based on, what we want and what we need is an environmental sustainability department that prevents disasters like the recent Valera Fire, the Flint Hills Oil Spill, that are inevitably bound to happen and are already happening, and negatively impact our home, environment, and friends and family. One thing is simple: we do not have an economy without an environment to live in. What so many people in the community within these, and within these walls of city hall want with this environmental sustainability department is simply a few experts who can help our city make small, environmentally-friendly changes in our city operations. The creation of green spaces, more equitable public transit, strategies to preserve our shorelines, public reports of air, water, and soil quality, preservations of wetlands, education programs that help community members become stewards of the land. All of these things can add up to make extraordinary impacts, and these are for the benefit of all, even those advocating against it. What sustainability means to me is creating a city that will continue to thrive for generations to come, for young folks like me. Why would college kids want to continue to call a city their home that doesn't even invest in the well-being of their future? That's why so many college kids are leaving the coastal bend. We are in a climate crisis. There's, there's no denying that. I've said it before, and I'll say it again, we simply do not have time to waste when it comes to taking action, especially for a coastal industrial city like ours. We are not trying to strip and negatively impact the economy. We want it to thrive. Help us do that here in Corpus Christi by establishing an environmental sustainability department. These are things, there are things that cities are doing. Let's follow in the footsteps of the seven largest Texas cities above us. Let's grow as a city. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Peacock. Rachel Caballero.
I'll wait on that handout.
I would like for you all to refer to the pictures that you have, should have in your possession now.
Ms. Caballero, can you set your name?
Yes, Rachel Caballero, 522 Hancock. One of my clients was billed for a little over 36,000 gallons of water that apparently leaked into their office during a one-week time period. For the record, there are no water stains, there's no water damage, there was absolutely no flooding, there's no visual proof of any type of leak. I requested a meeting with Corpus Christi Water Department to show that there is no way that the old building could have leaked 36,000 gallons of water without sustaining some type of damage, any type of damage. The five Corpus, five Corpus Christi Water Department employees refused to be reasonable and still claim that the 36,000 gallons of water was a result of a leaky toilet. This is what 36,000 gallons of water looks like to hold 36,000 gallons. This is the building that's on top of a hill. I've also included a picture of the building that's being blamed. Now, I'm no rocket scientist, but if 36,000 gallons of water actually did leak over a one-week time period, and based off the building and where it sits, this amount of water would have run down the street, impacting other business owners in the area, no one else was affected, and again, there is no proof of any water damage whatsoever. There have been a massive billing issue since the city manager brought in his San Antonio billing system in our city in 2018. People have been coming to city council meetings complaining week after week about these billing issues. Since I've started attending council meetings anyway, and nothing is being done or resolved, I implore this council, who is obligated to the constituents and taxpayers of this community, to force the city manager to figure out what is wrong with this billing system. The decision-making from this council is making it unaffordable for people to live here. We want representatives that look out for us, not the ones who are selling us out and nickel-and-diming us to death. Some of you need to decide where your loyalties lie. If you are on the wrong side of things, you will not be re-elected, no matter the position you seek. The truth is being exposed at all levels. Just ask the folks over at the Port of Corpus Christi. We are awake, and we're going to fight for what is right for all of us that love this community. By the, I'm not going to address the violations of the Texas Open Meetings Act, the walking quorum, and the collusion that have occurred between sitting council members and the Port of Corpus Christi commissioners, but that will be coming next week. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Caballero. Melissa Zamora.
Excuse me, Mr. Zanoni, can you please look into her, the issue, the 36,000 gallons? Has that been addressed, or can we address that?
Yes, ma'am, sorry, I referred to as Mary. Yes, Councilwoman, we have already, we have already met with Ms. Caballero, Mike Murphy, who's here, and his team did. There was...
Mr. Murphy did not, he was just...
Excuse me, if I can finish. So we have already sat down and met with her. The leak is probably a misnomer. There was, a leak can go down the sewer and not be detected at all, and that's what the owner of the building agreed has happened. So we have met with her, Mike Murphy has, they spent hours with her. And, and just for the record, I did not bring a San Antonio billing system here. The billing system we have, that we had four years ago when I first started, is the same billing system that we have today. So thank you.
Hello, everybody. My name is Melissa Zamora, I live at Louisiana Avenue in District 2. I'm going to start off where I left off before I got cut off last week. I want to circle back to desalination in the bay, how the deep concerns of thousands of residents have and are not just doom and gloom with no backing. According to the Coastal Bend Bays and Estuaries Program Vulnerability Assessment back in 2021, they concluded that the Corpus Christi Bay region has high annual average temperatures and salinities, and circulation within the bays of the region is sluggish. This means that the region is sensitive to changes in waterborne materials because they are easily concentrated by the high evaporation rates and low flushing rates. Overall, estuary community diversity is related to salinity, and as salinity increases past the optimal range, species diversity declines, and abundance of some ecologically and economically important species will decrease. Average salinities are already at levels that could impact species abundance and diversity, and therefore, small increases in salinity could add additional pressure to a system that is already experiencing salinity stress. So Corpus Christi Bay is already under enough stress and pressure. Adding even one DSal plant, let alone multiple, can have extreme and potentially irreversible damage, not only to the delicate habitat local species depend on, but for people's livelihoods who also depend on the health of the bay. Previous research shows that DSal plants consume enormous amounts of energy, cause land degradation, and create air, water, and noise pollution. Recent research also suggests that a plant's brine discharge site should be in areas lacking endangered species, and stressed marine habitats have solid underwater currents for rapid dilution and have limited ship traffic. Therefore, environmental features are just as important as commercial aspects influencing the maintenance and operation benefits and challenges. Social acceptance and public involvement is vital to address concerns and mitigate lawsuits. The majority of public comments when we did have those DSal meetings in the past were all opposed and concerned. Why are those not on the city website anymore? You used to be able to go and listen to all of those, I don't know what happened to that. Why are we not looking into serious large-scale rainwater catchment to address water shortages that can provide jobs? Where is industry's drought contingency and conservation plans? We are still waiting to see how the area's largest volume water users are doing all that they can to conserve water as our community continues to be subject to forced restrictions. Since I'm running out of time, I'll be back next time to talk about economic diversity and not just putting all of our apples into the basket of oil and gas. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Zamora. Isabel Isa.
I served on the, I serve on the Crime Control and Prevention District Board. We had a meeting on the 17th, and because I was worried I might not make the meeting, I sent an email addressing everyone. I raised two issues. One related to the order in which items were placed on the agenda, and another about how the proposed budget document didn't have an area where alternative programs could be added. I asked for guidance regarding procedure to make amendments. Then I discussed my wish to have an actual presentation on evidence-based prevention programs in future meetings so that the board could seriously consider programs focused on prevention, not just policing. Pat Eldridge, the Police Management Service Director, responded to my email saying, and I quote, "Just a reminder to the board that communications of any kind, including emails related directly to board business and items up for voting, a discussion that include a quorum of board members whether or not in a formal meeting creates a walking quorum and could be considered a violation of the Open Meetings Act." She went on to say, "Let's save any discussion or response for the meeting to avoid any issues should any of you respond to the email from Dr. Ed Isa this morning." I appreciated Pat's reminder about the Open Meetings Act, so I returned to the Open Meetings Act Handbook, which states the Open Meetings Act was adopted to help make governmental decision-making accessible to the public. This got me thinking about the recent controversy related to the MOU with the port. Six councilmen, Pusley, Suckley, Hernandez, Barrera, Hunter, and Roy, were in communication about this MOU, which was both city business and an item up for voting. It's worth noting that the text messages between Councilman Pusley and Port Commissioner Engel showed that Port Commissioner Engel and Geta, as well as Port Commissioner Chair Charlie Zahn, were also discussing the port MOU in secret away from the public eye. In fact, the Commissioner Engel's text to Councilman Pusley, which was dated March 1st, suggested they were trying to avoid the public. Engel's text to Pusley read, and I quote, "Think about moving up the timeline to next week's meeting. Don't want to give too much time for any opposition to gather steam. I am deeply concerned that these six councilmen violated the Open Meetings Act. A review of those lawfully obtained texts suggests that the majority of this council has a transparency problem, that the majority of the council has an ethics problem. This council is poised to make decisions that will have a dramatic and immediate impact on our quality of life. I worry that the other decision-making, about the other decision-making that is happening away from the public eye, like the proposed drought contingency plan that was first proposed in February, the one where residents can potentially see their water bills doubling while high-volume water users can just pay 25 cents per 1,000 gallons to be exempt from the drought contingency plan. Whatever happened to that? Is that being discussed in private, like the MOU? The committee needs to be able to trust that our council reps are not engaging in secretive negotiations away from the public eye. There is a crisis of confidence in the community about this council, and it is a crisis of your own making. There are limited ways to remedy this issue, one of which may be to hold council members who violate the Open Meetings Act accountable. I took my oath of office seriously. I'm just wondering if this council does, because it doesn't seem like it. Thank you."
Thank you, Ms. Edisa. I'm sorry, can we, we're going to keep our council decorum, no applauding, please. Eli McKay.
All right, there's a lot of energy in this room today. My name is Eli McKay, and like all of you, I live on the ancestral homelands of the Karankawa and Lipon Apache peoples, and what is now 1008 Marguerite Street in uptown Corpus Christi. So lately, I've been able to do some traveling. I'm happy to see the strides that cities like San Antonio, Houston, and Austin have made for all of the people who live in those cities. I've found them to be walkable, bikeable, with amenities like handwashing stations and public parks, solar-powered waste compactors with separate bins for recycling on city sidewalks, miles and miles of protected bike paths, keeping their citizens safe, and my personal favorite, free public showers and restrooms. These cities have figured out a way to create a more accommodating space for the people of all classes who live there, providing a safer place also for all classes of people who live there. When I come back home, I look around and I wonder, God, why can't we even have trashcans with lids on them in our parks? That's something that I never understood. It's so windy here. The more I learn about how things are done, and have been done here in Corpus Christi, the more I understand that not only do we deserve better, but we will have it. It will begin when our city joins every other city of its size or larger in Texas and establishes a Department of Sustainability. I am so tired of being so in love with a city that I'm constantly having to defend in conversations, because I know how amazing she will be when we allow ourselves all to shift happily now and forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McKay. Melissa, you sat there?
Hi. Melissa, you sat there, 6530 Peacock Drive, 78414. I was here last time. I am a foster with faith and hope rescue. My house is destroyed by dogs because I take care of dogs that are not being taken care of by Animal Control. Because you inherited this as a council, and there's a little app called Nextdoor. And Nextdoor started complaining because all they, all they talked about was dogs, 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 they were strays, whatever. So then I told them, look, you know, what we need to do is we need to get together and let me go see if I can talk to city manager. So I called, and they said, well, what you need to do is you need to start with neighborhood improvement. You need to follow the channel of whatever, and so, somebody will call you back. Nobody called back. So then I decided, okay, so I can't get in to see Mr. Zanoni, we'll start writing letters to him. So it's my job to bring the letters in, and I proudly bring them in for the citizens of Corpus Christi, to let you know that, yay, for the 491 officers that we have, that is commendable. For the 17 officers that we have in Animal Control, that's deplorable. That they're talking about, that they might get some help to clean the kennels, the guys that are there right now are cleaning the kennels half a day. So these 14 guys, there are 17 there, but some of them are on vacation, some of them are sick, some of them have a day off, so there's 14 that are there on a daily basis. Half the day they're cleaning kennels. The other half a day, they are, then they go to lunch, and then they've got like three hours to go out and chase the calls that people are making. I've asked for a map that they say that our city attorney, Miles Risley, has been given to see if you could show it here at the council, because I think when you see that map, and it's their progress map, you will see how little progress has been done. You inherited this, you didn't make this problem. They say it's cultural. I don't believe it. We're better than that. This is a beautiful city. Why should people have to drive on the freeway and see dead dogs on the side of the road? Right now, we have microchipping. It's not being enforced. Why? Because we don't have the officers. We don't have the officers to go out and enforce it. It's like having cars with no license plates, letting them run red lights, letting them... It's like having cars with no license plates, letting them run red lights, letting them speed, letting them do whatever they wanted to do and not get fined. I guarantee you, when it starts costing people in their pocket, they're going to start changing. But right now, I'm going to bring you stories of what I have reported, that nothing gets done, but it's really not Animal Control's, they don't have the money to do it. They... Go ahead.
No, 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 go ahead. I don't want to take your time.
Okay. I just want you to know that that $500,000 that you guys have allocated for spay and neutering, that's great, and they ask, well, we hope that helps you guys. No, 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 no. We need millions of dollars. We needed a lot of officers.
And Ms. Nusseta, I want to tell you that come this budget, this council is going to be looking at animal care services, because we do understand, no one is going to say there's no problem, there's a problem. And we have got to make that department more efficient, and we don't know exactly. I don't know. It isn't our job. We're not operations. He's operations. So he, Peter Zenoni, the city manager, so he will be, and he knows that.
Yep. Yeah.
So Peter, and I'll speak for you here, we know there's an issue there, and we know we have to make this department more efficient. We know the problems with loose animals, ordinances, enforcement, lack of enough maybe, you know, personnel in the department. That's what Mr. Zenoni tells us when he speaks with his directors over there or management team.
Somebody told me that the person I need to talk to is asset manager.
Well, no, what I'm trying to relay to you is that this issue is recognized. Yes, we realize that it exists, and in a very big way, and it's very, very important to me. I'm a big animal advocate.
But I will tell you this, I was kind of talking to them about the budget, and they just said to me that they're going to ask for 12 kennel texts, and they hope it gets approved. And I'm like, 12 kennel texts? That's like pouring a drop of water in a huge bucket. They're not even asking for enough stuff.
Well, that's in Mr. Zenoni's wheelhouse, what they ask for, and we're not involved in that, but he will bring forth, once he assesses with his director, and we're looking at the entire department. So please just know that. I want you to be comfortable.
I'm going to keep reporting and keep bringing you guys letters. Thank you for having me.
We appreciate you.
I appreciate it very much.
Yes, ma'am.
And Mayor, I just want to point out that not only are we looking at it in the budget, but we're going to be creating a standalone animal care department beginning June 1.
Yes.
So we're reorganizing our Neighborhood and Housing Services Department, as we know, and so we'll be having an interim director that will be over that department, and work will begin immediately on kind of checking out our business protocols.
That's wonderful, and I didn't know if that was okay to say. So a director will be over that department solely, which is going to be a big change. Yeah. Thank you, ma'am.
Mayor, Peter, can you confirm that Animal Control officers are being used to clean kennels? Does that, if we're utilizing that, that's not the appropriate use of those individuals?
I would agree with you, counsel.
Can you confirm that? Thank you.
I can confirm it. And then also, one other thing, Mayor and council, I have asked Constance, who's over Animal Care, to work with the Animal Care Advisory Board, because that board, as well as other commissions that the council has appointed, we want their recommendations for the budget. So the Parks and Recreation, the Marina Advisory, the Airport Advisory, Animal Care, the six or seven top high-profile library board is another one. I want to get from them, from those organizations that you all appoint members to, from the community, their thoughts on what we need in the budget. So they have about 30 days to do that, so we can have it in time for the budget deliberations to develop the budget for council consideration in July. So that's a good way to get input from the community through the advisory commissions and boards as well.
And thank you for that, Peter, because I'm seven years in, and I've never seen but maybe one recommendation. So every year, and I'm extremely frustrated with this, I have said it every year, if you are serving on an advisory volunteer committee, and it calls for the allowance of sending up recommendations, which we never hardly see, it needs to start happening.
That's why it's going to start this budget, and we have, two weeks ago, I already gave them, the staff, my teammates, who oversee the commissions, who help to organize their meetings, the requirement that we need a written recommendation from each of these six or seven top advisory boards and commissions, so we can use it to then present to the council a proposed budget. So it's going to happen this year, so seven years is a long enough wait.
It's a long time.
Yes, ma'am. So it'll stop this year, and we'll get those for you.
Thank you. Okay, Dustin Cronin. Then we have Victoria Holland, John Weber, and Brian Keeble. If you can come up for him, that'd be great. Thank you.
Good afternoon, city and council members and Mayor and Mr. Zenoni. Today, I have met, I have met so far in the month...
Mr. Cronin, I'm sorry to interrupt. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
I'm sorry about that. Dustin Cronin, Yorktown Boulevard, 5026. And I do want to appreciate each and, I do appreciate each and every one of y'all for helping out in the city and creating resources for autism awareness, and Councilman Hunter for also helping with my nonprofit coming up, who I have coming up here pretty soon, and I also got some board members. And I do have faith that each and every one of you on this city council will do your best to the ability to create resources and all that, and I'm going to compliment, and I know you've heard me do this lots of times, but I'm going to compliment the man sitting over here in police uniform, which is Chief Markle. We have made a lot of progress in our police department, and I couldn't thank him enough for that, and the fire department as well. And I also compliment CCISD and also county officials and everybody who's also helping. And I want to help any way I can, and I know it's going to take time, but it's not going to happen overnight. And I do want to say this, we have moved faster than I have expected, and I do appreciate each and every one of y'all. And that's all I have today.
Thank you, Mr. Cronin. Victoria Holland.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Victoria Holland. I live at 235 Ohio Avenue. It's a pleasure to be here. I've been here a few times, and as mentioned in the previous city council meeting, every goal of a proposed sustainability department can already be met within the capacity present in the departments we have today, especially following the recent influx of hiring and position filling, thanks to city manager Peter Zenoni. We're in a blessed position where any and all sustainable goals that I've heard, at least in the past few weeks, is achievable if it is a sound policy, if it is right for the city. We have the personnel available to address it. The only thing not mentioned in the previous few weeks, the only thing mentioned that would really not be filled except by the creation of a new department is that of policy. But policy and creating strategic goals for the city is the purview of this team right here, the city council, and by extension, the voters. It is within the wheelhouse, within the purview of this council to create the policy, to create the strategic goals, precisely because that is how voters have their voice heard. We don't manage the city. We hire great people to manage the city, but we create policy here in this room. Now, if you create a department with policy within their purview, you are directly disenfranchising the voters of this city. You are directly telling voters of today that their vote tomorrow will not count, or it will count less, because now there will be a department with policies in place that may supersede the desires of council members here in this room. I want to also bring up the fact that every single sustainable goal mentioned previously in this room is one that I believe we already address, right? I'm fairly certain that when new public projects come up, there is an environmental review, such as if there were, say, a D-SAL project. I assume you would look at what environmental factors would be involved with such a project, what the economics of that would be. You would probably want to, like most other developed nations, run a hose out into the Gulf to make sure that the salinity isn't overwhelmingly impacted here in the Gulf. But all this is way above my pay grade, and honestly, it's not my job to bring solutions to you. It is my job, though, to advocate for the people of this city and the right that they have to have their vote be heard, not just heard in lip speak, not just heard in, you know, the person they think is nice sitting in those chairs, although I'm sure all of you were hired to, or voted on to an extent for that reason, but because voters have a right to expect the policies that they wanted to be created in this room. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Holland. John Weber.
John Weber, 609 Naples Street. Regarding Agenda Item 18, I think it is fiscally irresponsible to spend a quarter of a million dollars on a modular building for the engineering department when there are thousands of square feet of vacant office space within walking distance of the city hall. Please vote against this wasteful spending. At the April 18th meeting, Sean Strawbridge invited the public to submit information requests. So I did. On April 25th, I submitted the same request to the city as to the port. I had all the information I requested from the port in eight business days. I had an estimate from the city in 10 business days and no information. The city wanted over $100 more for the same information request that the port had already provided me. I will read from the State Attorney General's website. Typically, a governmental body must promptly produce public information in response to your request. Promptly means the governmental body may take reasonable amount of time to produce the information and may not delay. The amount of time reasonably necessary to release information can vary depending on the facts in each case. If a governmental body will take longer than 10 business days to produce the requested information, the governmental body must notify you when the information will be released. One request I submitted, the city failed to get the information by the state required time limit and did not notify me when the information would be released, as required by the Attorney General's office. It took 19 business days for me to get that information. I am hopeful in the future my requests, as well as others requesting information, can be processed quickly, efficiently, and affordably as the request that the port processes. Thank you, and always have a nice day.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. Brian Keeble.
Good afternoon. I'm Brian Keeble, 4350 Ocean and 121 Southern. I actually refused to speak last week. I was the very last one, and I wanted to apologize for that, but I wanted to let you know why. The person, I actually had a praise report for the police department, and there was an elderly veteran that had quite the opposite experience, and I was not going to step on his experience last week. Though, as a CEO of a company, I really just get placed. I'm always at the right place at the right time, and I deal with executives all the time. Last week, I was sitting right next to Chief Markle, and when this gentleman came up, this veteran came up and had his heart-wrenching story, though, you know, Chief Markle was right on it, though, you know, he was intently aware of it, or he was not aware of the situation, and he was upset that he was not aware of the situation already, and he wanted to do everything that he could to rectify it. Though, that really impressed me. Something else that happened later on in the city council meeting was the exchange between Councilman Hernandez and our city manager. They were butting heads. I absolutely loved it. They were both heading in the same direction, they wanted the same goal, it was just a matter of procedure on how we fund this to protect our, what was it, between 80 million and $350, $400 million worth of projects that are active or in the pipeline right now. So I really, really enjoyed that, that they were both actually protecting our money, though you hear of a lot of politicians that, you know, they just want to be spendthrifts and just anything. They were both on it. Now, this brings me to my other point. We have a unique opportunity right now, where we have two fantastic executives that would be excellent as the CEO of the Port Authority. They, when would we ever have another opportunity to have, where the Port Authority and the city are going more parallel than adversarial? They both love the city, they both know what the city needs, and they both have managerial experience to be able to run something like that. Rather than the port hiring someone from outside that would still have a adversarial, I nominate either of these two gentlemen. They know what they're doing. It would work out well for Corpus. And, by the way, my project is going fantastic, so thank you for all that you do.
Thank you, Mr. Keeble. Okay, Rebecca, I think that concludes our public comments.
Ma'am, yes, ma'am.
And do we have the three?
We have, yes, they're online. The first person who'll be calling on the phone is Pamela Woods.
Good afternoon. My name is Pamela Woods, and I live at 926 Rosedale Drive, and I've been in Corpus for 43 years. I moved here from West Texas, and I never left. I love it here. But I want to talk about Sustainability Division. Per San Antonio Sustainability Division policy, it states that it is a roadmap to the envisioned future. On this roadmap, it is essential to, number one, assess greenhouse gas emissions, number two, understand the impacts of a changing climate. And the policy goes on to say, changing climate conditions are relevant to city planning. Envisioned future, well, who's envisioned future? Relevant to city planning? Why and how? I have three points I want to try to make. First, no one in my 50 years that I can remember has ever been able to prove scientifically that climate change is a real science. For climate change to be real science, the theory, climate change, would have to have been tested to prove the theory. Scientists have not been able to prove that the climate has in any way relevant effect on our future, other than what we know historically. Secondly, consider the fact there is no science, only predictions and subjective arguments. A reasonable person must ask themselves why. The answer is, there is no real reason, other than growing government and increasing its intrusion into our daily lives. Intrusion is more oversight into our local economies, oil and gas, construction, commercial, the port, and many others. The oversight will come in the form of standards forcing each industry to bend to the green energy dictates of mandatory electrical use and the elimination of other sources of energy. The government will become the vehicle that will replace the natural forces of supply and demand. Thirdly, the only people that will gain will not be the citizens, but the increased size of government and their power to dictate winners and losers in their green energy agenda. Large corporations that have the money, power, and influence to opt out of the mandates will be provided extensions, i.e. winners, while many small businesses will have to put up or shut down, i.e. losers. Remember COVID? China will gain because there are the principal providers of solar, wind, and lithium for all green energy, appropriate transportation, and heating and cooling of homes and businesses, not American companies, not right now. In conclusion, the only relevant city planning for environmental needs are the ones that we plan for based on historical data that we do every year. As a citizen and business owner of this city, I don't need my government dictating winners and losers or redistributing wealth through government standards. I need my government to provide public safety, municipal services, and justice for all, basically an environment that allows us to thrive, and I thank you for listening to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Woods. Next is Armin Alex. Mr. Alex?
Howdy, folks. This is Armin Alex. I live at 1610 La Jolla Street, District 3. And speaking of District 3, my thoughts are also with Councilman Barrera today. So over the past, you know, few months, we have been coming with facts, with figures, with peer-reviewed research, galore. I mean, golly, are we still debating if climate change exists? Are we still debating that we have pollution problem on our streets? Are we still debating that we have pollution problem on our streets? The answer is, we shouldn't be, but yet someone has knocked on the door of the cuckoo's nest, and here we are, speaking just quite bluntly here. We have got conspiracy theorists coming up to public comment and spewing misinformation. There is a reason why over the past few decades, cities across the United States have been implementing environmental initiatives, because they are listening to the experts, they are taking science into account. Cities have an obligation to protect its residents, and one of many ways that they can do that is making sure they take care of the environment, in which all city operations operate in. We do not have a city without our environment and our natural resources. Why are we still debating some of these issues? So when we talk about city, environmental sustainability, staffing, we know we need it, and we've got people coming up to public comment making outlandish accusations, major assumptions. They have yet to have any conversations with the people that are actually having these discussions about environmental sustainability, staffing. They have yet to reach out to Peter Zanoni to talk about what his staff is doing in terms of building out this budget. They are bringing up outlandish ideas. What we have provided over the course of months, I will reiterate, is science, scientific facts, peer-reviewed research, statistical analysis from what is being done in already proven cities across the U.S., in the Gulf South, in Texas. There's a reason why they haven't done. And the other thing, because they seem to know so much about what we are discussing, if they had only asked, if they had only reached out to Peter Zanoni, they would know that these discussions are still ongoing. We have yet to settle on what those goals in terms of sustainability are. How could they possibly know if they're not asking? What I'm trying to say in this regard is that what works best for those cities that have these initiatives, that have sustainability departments, is engaging with community members. They only make those initiatives based on what is doable for that city, and that is what we're putting forward, not this conspiracy theorist stuff that they're bringing up. So I encourage this council to continue to look at the research that we provide with every comment that we make. Thank you so much.
Last on the list is Catherine Barnes. Ms. Barnes?
Thank you so much. This is Catherine Barnes. My address is 520 South Chaparral. I'm here to talk about certificate obligations. Certificate of obligations are instruments of public debt made available to the governing bodies of cities, counties, and certain special districts. Certificate of obligations can be issued without voter approval unless a referendum is petitioned and backed by tax revenue, as stated by the Texas Controller. Certificate of obligations were originally created to give local governments a tool for emergency spending. A certificate of obligation is debt that citizens do not have a chance to vote on. There's been a growing body of evidence suggesting that non-voter approved debt is being issued for capital improvement projects that are either controversial or discretionary, such as public art, projects, swimming pools, and parks. Certificate of obligations have ballooned in recent years as local cities, counties, and special districts have developed a habit of adding debt-fueled tax increases to already overburdened citizens. Our great city of Corpus Christi, Texas, has developed a habit of using this form of debt to pay off initiatives adding to taxes without consulting the citizens of Corpus Christi. I'd like to remind the mayor, city council, and everyone else of the original intent of COs and to refrain from using them in the future for anything other than emergencies. Thank you so much for your time, and may God bless your day.
Thank you, Ms. Barnes. Mayor, that concludes the public comment period.
Thank you, Ms. Woods. So we'll go ahead and go back to Mr. Zanoni. You had one more item?
Right. I don't know if Mr. Gordy, did you want to recognize him?
I signed in out there, but for some reason...
He had his hand raised, I don't know if he...
I signed in to public comment.
Ms. Woods?
It's, I mean, I don't have the name on the list.
Mr. Gordy, I'm so sorry we don't show you on the list. That's why you weren't called up.
They don't even care what I got to say. I people violating the law that's sitting up there.
Is there a...
State law, federal law, and the city ordinance.
Was there an issue, Ms. Woods?
With the system, not to my knowledge, no, ma'am.
Okay, Mr. Gordy, go ahead and come on up. We really do need, if there's a problem or if you have any issue out there, please let us know, so that Ms. Woods, she prints out the list, so the people on this list or who...
Well, evidently, the machine's not working, because I signed in out there.
Okay.
Now, what I wanted to speak about is the city council should not be violating the federal law, state law, and the city ordinance. Saturday morning, there was a political sign put up on Weber Road for the next city council election, for one that's sitting up there right now, okay? For the next city council election, and that, it was in the right of way, on Weber Road, violating the federal law, state law, and the city ordinance. I called in Monday morning, code enforcement got the sign, and they told me they wrote a citation for $2,000, and the person that's guilty is Roland Barrera, putting signs up already for political, for his next city council election. So that shouldn't be allowed.
Okay.
So something needs to be done about it.
Is this allowable, Mr. Wissley?
It's, stating false information on public communication is not prohibited.
If I may make a statement of fact, Mayor?
You may.
At this time, I'm not aware, or have I solicited or put up signs with regard to that. Now that there may be one floating around with my name on it, I'm not going to dispute, but should anyone inform us that one has been put up, I'd be happy to take it down.
Well, the code enforcement said they're writing a citation for $2,000, because the sign should not be there. It ain't there now. They got the sign.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Gordy.
Good, okay, Mayor. So we have one more item on our city manager report. This one is an update on our water resources for the city. I asked Mike Murphy to put together, and he's going to come up to the podium now, put together a comprehensive update for the council and the community on our efforts on five different water supply sources.
Okay. And while they're coming up, I just want to commend our water department. While at the Hooks game yesterday, it was brought to my attention that they were so appreciative of how quickly the team got out a couple of weeks ago, wasn't it? When there was a main break or something had gone awry there at the stadium, and so they were very, very impressed and very, just great commentary on the work and how quickly you all responded, so thank you for that.
Thank you, Mayor. We appreciate that very much, just like we said this morning, and thank you for the proclamation this morning of Drinking Water Week. Like I said, we're a 365-day-per-year, 24-hour-per-day operation, and we're very proud of the work that we do. So what we're going to be talking about today is an update to our water supply. So we've got several different fronts that we're working on right now that you'll hear in this report. We're working on the Owen Stevens rehabilitating, the Owen Stevens plant, the Mary Rose Pipeline, and then we've got several projects that are in the queue right now that we are investigating for alternate sources of water. So to start the project, or, okay, so Corpus Christi Water, just a quick update on some of the things that you probably already know about, but we maintain over 1,800 miles of water lines within our city. We provide 80 million gallons per day out of Owen Stevens Water Treatment Plant. This is an average per day, this is averaged over 12 months. We provide service to over 500,000 people across the coastal bend as a regional water provider for the coastal bend, and we maintain a superior rating on our water system, something that we remain very proud of. So our water sources that we want to highlight here, as you know, we've got the Lake Texana, Mary Rose, that is, provides water through Mary Rose Pipeline. We've got the Colorado River that is in Mary Rose Phase 2, and then we've got our two water sources from the Oasis River via Choke Canyon and Lake Corpus Christi. Currently, right now, we're running about, I think today, we estimate that we're going to put 46 million gallons through the Mary Rose Pipeline, and the remaining for Owen Stevens, we're close to 100 million gallons per day right now at Owen Stevens. The remaining comes from the Oasis Authority. We're also actively engaged in Water Conservation 365. We had a successful rain barrel sale this spring. We sold out our rain barrels, almost 270 of those before April ended, and we plan to bring this program back, and this is where you can come to one of our events to learn more about water conservation, and we'll give you a voucher to bring up here to City Hall. You pay for it, and then you can go to our warehouse and pick up a rain barrel, and it's a good deal, it's about a $20 discount on each rain barrel that we sell. We've increased our presence at community events in the name of Water Conservation 365, where we get out information on water-saving practices, including zero-scape principles, looking for leaks around the home, and using low-flow appliances. We have given out shower timers, water-saving showerheads, leak-detection tabs, hose nozzles with cutoff valves, and faucet adapters. We will have a summer video series that a lot of you are taking part in, in the media, where we are working with City Hall Communications to film PSAs that we will be providing TV spots on our local news media channels. In the fall, we plan to have a campaign for conserving water during the freeze event by offering home insulation with a how-to video to instruct residents how to insulate their homes safely during a freeze event. This is in lieu of running your water faucets continually throughout the event. So, water supply improvements, this is a really important slide, and we'll spend some time on this, but the water supply improvement projects at Owen Stevens. Currently, right now, we have a reliable treatment capacity at Owen Stevens of about 105 million gallons per day. We can, if needed, go all the way up to 135 million gallons per day, if needed, but our reliable sort of cruise control water production out of Owen Stevens is around 105 million gallons per day. So projects that we're working on right now, a few weeks ago, council approved the Oasis River 54-inch pipeline. That was approved, I think, about four weeks ago. Clearwell Number 3 came before council two weeks ago, and we're continuously working on these other projects, the pre-sedimentation, hydraulic, and chemical improvements, our chlorine safety upgrades, and also our flocculators at Owen Stevens. Our goal over the next four years, in working on these key projects, is to raise that reliable treated capacity currently at 105, raise that reliable treated capacity to 135 million gallons per day, with a peak of 180. Now, this will give us 30 million gallons more per day that we're currently not getting because of the age and the condition of Owen Stevens. So this is a very important four-year project. This is all part of our plan to increase water supply and address drought conditions throughout our city. Also, what we're currently working on is the assessment of the Mary Rose Pipeline. We completed a desktop assessment of about a 20-mile stretch of the Mary Rose Pipeline, and that leads to a further investigation and assessment of the 101-mile stretch of Mary Road Phase 1. We hope to bring that contract back to council for approval, to do that assessment work in June 13th of 2023. Right now, we're running Mary Road Pipeline at a reliable daily flow of about 40 to 45 million gallons per day, through this assessment and with recommended modifications and rehabilitation to the Mary Road Pipeline. We hope to get that up to 50, 55 to 65 million gallons per day.
Councilman Suckley?
Yeah, so the 25-mile assessment, was that the report that was done in January?
Yes, that was done by HDR.
So why are we four months later and we're bringing it in June? I mean, with us being, trying to expedite things, it seems like five months is a lot of time.
Well, we did try to, but I guess that is the expedited version of the way that we, the way that we do our contracts on things like this. We did include that with several other water projects, and then we separated that out so that we could get it to council sooner. Unfortunately, that's just how long it takes to go through the process.
We had to do a competitive, we did a competitive proposal, bid for proposals, and we, as you can see in that prior slide, there's a lot of work going on, so we grouped it with numerous solicitations, but as Murphy just said, we pulled this one out to advance it quicker. Yes, sir. And if you can, since I'm speaking, Murphy, go back to that prior slide. I don't have it written down yet, but the total investment in Items 1 through 6 that are in our capital improvements plan that City Council approved last summer, total, what was that total again?
So if you...
143 million. This is just an important point to point out, that this city council and this team on our side are investing significantly in our water infrastructure, like never before, 140, almost 150 million in the Owen Stevens Water Treatment Plant that is aging, it's old, so this is tremendous investment to keep that system running and running more efficiently and producing more water for distribution to all types of customers.
And you'll see, as we sort of put these slides together, how this fits in with the smart plan that we're working on right now to bring more water to the city. And this is, this is a four-year project to upgrade about 30 million gallons of water that we can treat more than what we're currently treating.
Okay. Councilman Pessley?
Yeah, Michael, to further what Councilman Suckley was talking about, I thought we were already underway studying the other 100 miles of Mary Roads, and so, you know, today, one of the items on our agenda is to do a change order to a contract we have with one of the asphalt paving companies here to do additional work. Peter, why couldn't we do that with this engineering deal so we could have already gotten started on this?
Because the original contract was less than 50,000, so we would be doing a 5.5 million dollar change order. We know, last week, as an example, several...
So we'd be over the 25%.
Right, well, that too, but we do, as to the extent possible, we want to have solicitation proposals to, as Councilman Hernandez talked about last week, in some cases, we follow state law and don't do a process, in the case of inspections where over $80 million of work's already underway, but we know the urgency of this, we have, we pushed it forward, shaved off a few weeks, probably a couple months, in advancing the solicitation process, the review process, and getting it to council.
Because the design capacity of Mary Roads, if I remember right, mine was 72 million a day, is that correct?
That's correct. Well, so we, Councilman, thank you for bringing that up. We had that conversation yesterday, and we need to continue to state these numbers, but the maximum capacity, 75 million gallons a day, that's at 100% full, and the analogy is, if you had a Ferrari or a real fast car, most likely you're not going to drive it at 200 miles an hour often. So an aged pipeline, even after we fix it and make it, we still probably don't want to run it at full throttle, we don't want to run it at 100%. So what Murphy said a moment ago was 55 to 60 million gallons a day would be optimal for the age of the pipe, which is, it's about 90% full.
Well, and I realize our water treatment plant will only handle so much.
And that too, right.
Yeah, so it's not only, it's just, it's not just the water treatment plant, but it's also our two water sources, the Colorado and the Texana.
The problem is, many people don't understand that, and I, you know, myself and other council members get hit all the time by people saying, well, why the heck aren't, you know, you could put in another 30 million gallons a day if you just produce it, and so it's hard for people to grasp that.
That's why we want to talk about it today, and we'll continue to. So 55 is what's in there today, million gallons, not percent. 55 million gallons, we think, given the age, given our consultant comments on it, we could at max get it to 65 million gallons, but we won't do that until this assessment is done and repairs are made.
Is there any estimate on how long this engineering report... Is there any estimate on how long this engineering report will take, Michael?
Yeah, so probably nine months. It's, it's a big pro, obviously, it's a big project. And we're going to be very thorough with it. So, our budget on this, for the assessment is three-point-one million. The negotiations that we've had with HDR were around two-point-seven million to get the work done. And they're ready to get started. Obviously, we know that HDR has got great experience with the Mary Road Pipeline from the, from the very beginning of, of the construction of that project.
Okay.
So...
Let's see, I think, um... And this, Peter, this may be way out in left field, but, you know, our gas department offers discounts to people who install gas utilizing device, natural gas utilizing, like heaters and gas hot-water heaters. You get a little discount from the city if you do that, typically on the tap fees, I think.
Right, that's correct. And there's a construction rebate for the, for the builder of the home.
Is there any way we could apply that same logic to water-using devices as developers build new houses here in the city to say, you know, we'll give you some, if you install water-saving devices, like, you know, whatever those might be? Now, there's a whole list of them. Would that be something we could investigate?
We can investigate it. I know there's regulations on some of the flow devices, you know, by, I don't know if it's the federal government or this.
Yeah.
But we, let us look into that, yeah.
Yeah, I, I will tell you, at a, at a former place where I used to work, and I won't mention the name of it, we did the water-saving devices throughout the building, and we saved a huge amount on our water bill every month. So, it can be significant.
It can be, and, and of all classifications, too. When we, we just talked to an industrial partner last week, and the, the reduction in water that they use because of devices like you're talking about was dramatic. Like in the, I don't have the exact numbers, but it was a substantial reduction in water. So, industrial customers and our partners there are doing similar to reduce water usage.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Campos.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Peter, for mentioning at least what industry is, is trying to do to conserve water. And, and that's what's always missing, I'm sorry, Mr. Murphy, but in, in your reports, is that most of it is, is addressed to the consumer, the, you know, the water consumer, not the industrial users. Why is it that we never get information on their usage? Why is it that we never hear what, what they're doing to conserve? Like, for instance, you know, Peter, you just mentioned that they use these low-flow devices or whatever it is that they're doing. But I don't know, is that happening on all our, you know, corporate industries? I don't know. Do we know? We don't know, do we? I mean, what, what industry is doing to save and conserve water?
So, we have contracts with, with the, are you talking about the large-volume users? Are you just talking about commercial users in general?
Large volume water users.
So, they have contracts with the city that we're obligated to, to, to provide. I mean, that, that's, that was the deal for them to move their, their facility to the city.
Now, we, oh, go ahead, Murphy.
No, so we are meeting this Friday with the large-volume users, and we're going to be talking about their water conservation plan. This is something that we talked with them about a month, a month and a half ago, and asked them to come back to us with what they're doing to, to help conserve water during, during time of severe drought.
Right, but as you know, they don't have to cut back. You know, right now, we're still in, in Stage One. So, my proposal is, you know, can we, I mean, I know right now, they're paying the twenty-five-cent exempt fee, charge, drought, but is there a possibility that they can do something, just like they have exemptions? Can they do something to cut back as well? Even though we, they, they don't have to, I know they don't have to, but just for preserving the water that we need? I mean, water is precious. And as you know, you know, the water customers are trying to do their best, buying water barrels. I mean, we're, we're, we're doing what we can. I know people are watching their, their water usage, but yet, we still, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm grateful that finally we're hearing something, or we're about to hear something of what the heavy industry water users are doing, but we need to hear more. And can you tell us exactly or approximately, you know, how much water they do use? Because that always gets left out of the equation. Can you tell us that?
I can, I can get that information for you.
But you've said that before. Why can't, why don't you just have that information readily available?
Yeah, Murphy, we have it. The, the large-volume users are in the fifty-five, fifty, between fifty, fifty, fifty-three million gallons a day for our large-volume users.
Is that fifty-three, is that right?
Yes, so our large-volume users, you can, we look from municipal and, and industrial users, about fifty, it's fifty-fifty. That's what we've seen in two thousand and twenty-two. And, and to get to your other questions about communication on water conservation and drought contingency with our large-volume users, we're always in communication with our customers. And that is something that we here at CCW promote. And through Water Conservation Three Sixty-Five, we get out there and we communicate with all of our customers and including those large-volume users, so that we can encourage their consumption. They, they can look at and what, how they're using it. And if you go to one of the facilities, the interior is modern. They use low-flow devices for washing the hands. And it's the efficiencies on the outside are within their industrial processes. And they look at as water as an input to their cost of their products. They're always trying to better use that source efficiently. And so, that's, every day, we're talking with them, representatives from the different Vlero, Citco, Flynn Hills on these items. And again, like Mike said, we'll have another meeting this Friday to discuss this issue.
Again, you look at the presentation that we are giving and even, and, and another thing I wanted to just point out is this, is why is it that this was placed in the agenda at the last minute? You know, really, it was just placed Friday. We, why?
Yeah, that wouldn't be the last minute, Councilwoman, but we tried to get these out on Monday. But in this case, Murphy was continuing to work with his team. He had a, he had some medical appointments he had to attend to. So, but it wasn't last minute, he had it Friday. And today is the final briefing. But you do raise a good point. We'll continue to, and that's why we're having this meeting, as Murphy mentioned, on Friday. We're continuing to have that dialogue so we can better understand and then better present to the council and the community how industry is conserving water.
Okay.
And so, we'll bring that to you. We're in the beginning stages of the conversations with the industry. We're meeting with over thirty-five plant managers this week, second time in this, in this many months to, and that's a big part of the agenda, and to go over this type of material with them. So, yeah, point's well taken, and we'll make sure we, as we get the information, we can, we can talk to the council about it.
I, I hope so, because this is what's been missing for so long, so...
We agree, that's why we're going to be talking about it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. How old is the Mary Rose Pipeline?
Twenty-four years old.
I'm sorry?
Twenty-four years old.
Twenty-four years old.
It's older than that. Thirty-four.
Uh, well, I don't...
No, it, it was, it's about, yeah, twenty-four to twenty-five years old. That's, that's Phase One. And then Phase Two, going out to Bay City, is, is younger.
So, we were doing a, a mid, sort of a midlife, it was designed for a fifty-year life, right? Typical pipelines. And so, the twenty-five-year was the benchmark for doing the assessment. Last summer, as we all know, we were running Stage Three water, which got us, we were up around fifty-five, sixty million gallons per day. And then we had the blowout last summer, and that's what prompted the, the first twenty-mile assessment. But that, that's what we had, twenty.
Can, can we get some real confirmation as when water started flowing through there as to what the age is? Is it from the time it was constructed or from the time it started pushing water? What is the official time, the start date?
Okay.
Okay. In looking at that, I'm sure, I'm assuming the scope is to determine what the condition of the pipeline is, what the expected, like, the life expectancy. I know we're looking at, at fifty-year life expectancy, but in our somewhat humid environment, it may not last that long. So, I'm assuming that's part of the scope, to determine what the length of it.
Absolutely, that, that's the goal. That's, that's part of the scope of what we're going to be doing. We're going to be looking externally. We're going to do drone flights for the, the entire length of the pipeline. And then we're putting new technology actually inside the pipeline. It's a, it's sort of a ball-type of a acoustic piece of equipment that you actually put it inside the pipeline, and then you can see the internal conditions of the pipeline. But the, the first assessment that we had done at the end of, end of last year did indicate that we were having problems in several of the joints. That's the main problem with the pipeline. And so, we're going to be taking a, a real hard look at that. And so, we'll come back once we, once we do that. We, we can kind of give updates throughout that project if you'd like to do that. And we'll bring, we're recommending HDR. You'll see that in, in the council meeting on June thirteenth that we're recommending to, to do this.
Does it also includes cost for replacement or estimated cost?
Well, right now, we don't know. We, we don't know what we, what we're going to see until we actually get it and, and the extent of it. But, but their scope was, I, I think that's the question you're asking. Yes, will include estimated cost to do repair work to the project.
Okay, so based on your numbers of forty-five million gallons a day and a maximum capacity of seventy-five million gallons a day, it's operating at sixty percent efficiency, correct?
It's operating...
Sixty percent efficiency?
A little bit below sixty percent right now. It's, it's probably closer to fifty-five percent. Yeah.
Okay. Will you be including Frank Brogan in this assessment? I know he was intimately involved in the construction of it.
Yeah, I'm, yes, sir, I know who you're talking about.
On some other items, can you get us an actual written breakdown as to the consumption of water for our customers, including large users? Who they are and, and what, you know, put a, you know, point of who, who large users are and who, and whose regular cus, regular customers, you could just lump them in together?
Yes, yes, sir. And I thought that's what Ms. Campos was asking, that I didn't have that at my fingertips.
Well, if you can include it.
Yeah, we, we can break that down.
All council members, so we have an idea of what that, you could just use a reference of two thousand and twenty-two is fine.
Yeah.
Yeah, Councilman, recently, we sent the top ten users, as requested by the council, to the full council. That was a few months ago. The top ten largest users from our, our customers.
Okay, so, but that doesn't give you, that's just the top ten.
I know, I'm just pointing it out that we did send the top ten as, as requested.
Okay, and lastly, you, you, on your presentation here, you say chlorine safety upgrades. I'm assuming that's onsite generation?
Yes, that's onsite.
What's your timeline for that?
Well, our timeline, maybe Drew can help me with this one. We're currently finalizing the design of that system, and then it's in three phases. And so...
It's a years, in plural, many years, but Drew, go ahead.
Yeah, Councilman, as Murph just said, it's, it's in design right now. And the construction is, let's see, I actually don't think I have that. I can get that to you. I don't actually have the construction schedule right in front of me. But it is, it is in design, and it's going to be in several phases. So, the first phase is we're going to produce chlorine in, in bulk. And, and then we'll transition, ultimately, we'll transition away from the ninety-ton railcar, right? So, the, the current use of chlorine right now, as, as you know, is, is ninety-ton railcars. It's, it's, that's fairly uncommon. It's not something that we see a lot across the industry, just because of some of the hazards associated with ninety-ton railcars. And so, ultimately, you know, the decision has, has been made that the, that CCW and, and the, and the, the council want to push forward with, with an onsite chlorine generation, chlorine feed system.
Okay, I, I appreciate that, and I would...
Yeah, Nick has, excuse me, Councilman, Nick has a number of years there for the construction.
Yeah, so it's, it's, it's a three-year construction schedule. So, if we get this awarded in the fall, so then we'd be looking at two thousand and twenty-six for a finished construction target date.
Okay, I would also like to see the financial analysis to show that this is going to save us money. I mean, I would probably approve it anyway, just for the safety concerns associated with it. At least from my perspective, that it, I'd rather not have a ninety-ton railcar there, sitting there. But, okay, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Councilman Roy.
You know what, and if I can, just to piggyback on Councilman Hernandez, one thing, and it's a policy question for the council that I want to sow the seed of, and thank you, Mayor, for giving me this one moment here. What we do need to look at also with the Mary Rose Pipeline is redundancy. There's just one pipeline. So, part of the study we're going to look at is what would it be to have a redundant line, two pipelines, to transport the water so we can take one offline for regular maintenance? Where this, this is another, I would call it another legacy issue, where we got one pipeline to transport half our water here from a hundred miles away, and if you need to maintain it, if it breaks, there's no redundancy. So, we're going to look into that. It's a concept we just started talking about. But it's a big policy issue, because obviously, cost is there. But it's something good to talk about in the community about that.
Thank you, Peter. Councilman Roy.
I want to take a second and just kind of regress on, and talk a little bit about the Evangeline groundwater and, and where you're at. It says you have continued meetings with HDR. And it says hydrologic issues. You know, I know if, if I remember from the briefing, that currently, right now, with the Evangeline groundwater, that sentence is using them. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And they're using it for residential purposes, right?
Yes.
And, and when they use that for residential purposes, they really, if I, my understanding is, as, as far as the treatment goes, it's really small in terms of...
Probably more like, it goes through a chlorination process.
So, that brings me, I was just thinking about this. What are the hydrologic issues right now in terms of, does it apply mostly to industry?
For the Evangeline site?
Yeah, you're saying you're having continued meetings with them on hydrologic issues.
Actually, you're a step ahead of me.
Oh, well, that's always good to be.
And we'll, we'll get to that. If, if we're through with the, talking about the Owen Stephens improvements in the Mary Road Pipeline, then I'll be more than happy to go into that. And we can talk about that if, if you want to just...
Yeah, because I had a couple of questions about that and just kind of the water, water delivery system.
Councilman Klein.
Thank you. Mike, I'll go back to just a couple of slides. I think you were talking about the rain barrel program. That's encouraging. Um, as you said, you sold out by April already. Given the fact that you sold out, I guess that's relatively quickly. Are you thinking about trying to expand that going forward?
Yes, we are.
Any idea by, by how much? I mean, I don't know what, I don't know what the, how you measure that, the need.
Adriana, I'm going to bring Adriana up to help with that. She's the one that is overseeing our Water Conservation Three Sixty-Five. So, this is Adriana Escamilla, and...
Fantastic question, Councilman Klein. We did sell out of rain barrels fairly quickly. We, not even three weeks into the program, and we sold out. There's still an opportunity for residents to save money on, on items that would save water around the home. This weekend is tax-free weekend for Memorial Day on water-saving items around the home. But for next year, we are planning to have a bigger, more of a broader painted brush stroke so we can have a day where the community can come and pick them up from Holly Road.
Right, right. So, so, just for the sake of the public's information, the rain barrels will be available again come next January?
Most likely right before the rainy season, so we'll, we'll be looking at the late March, early April timeframe.
Okay, all right. And, and again, you're talking about expanding it. Do you have an idea, are you going to try to double it or not quite that ambitious?
Yes, so we have three hundred this past year. That's how many fit in one trailer truck to come down from San Antonio. And so, we plan to possibly double that. We're looking at those numbers right now.
Okay, so next March, then?
Yes.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, so, talking about our diversified water portfolio planning project. So, we're working on several different projects on several different fronts right now. And so, we'll, we'll quickly go through these. The first one is more recent, the most recent one is the Harbor Island Seawater Desalination, what we're calling the collaboration with the Port of Corpus Christi. So, the next steps on that one is we're working with Pape Dawson. We're setting up a meeting with, with them as soon as we can to go into what they're looking at as far as a water integration plan. And what that means is, if they were to build the harbor... And what that means is if they were to build the Harbor Island Desal Plant, at what point does that integrate into our system, into the city of Corpus Christi's water system? So that's going to be a big study. And so we're we're looking forward to working with with Pape Dawson on that. We've worked with them on a number of other projects. So so I think that's going to be a good working relationship. The city manager and the port CEO, Mr. Strawbridge, have been in communication, and we plan to continue to work with the port's interim interim CEO, whoever that may be, to to work on a drought proof, sustainable water supply. To date, the majority of council has visited the Harbor Island site and have taken that taken that tour. And there may be other tour or other opportunities in the very near future. So now we get to the Evangeline groundwater site. HDR continues to work with Evangeline and others to examineate, to examineate. That's a new word, to examine the hydro geological issue. And what this is, to answer your question, Councilman Roy, is to determine the subsidence, subsidiary? Oh, my gosh, the subsidence, thank you, from the from the back there. And what this is, is will it lower or or compact the groundwater table, causing the earth to shift? That's something that we have to look at. And that's one of the things that that the subsidence issue that we're looking at. And then we're also looking at, if we start drawing this water out of the out of the Evangeline water table, what does that look like as far as water levels in the aquifer? Because the way that the the proposal that we're working with with the Evangeline group is some seventeen to eighteen wells in the well field producing upwards of a million, million and a half gallons per day per well. So.
Ask my question. So early on in the presentation that they gave, Evangeline basically said that there was a and I might be wrong, I might be off a couple of years, but a hundred and ninety something years.
Yeah, it was a large.
Of water availability.
Right.
Without replenishment. So that's just based on what's there now, a hundred and eighty, a hundred and ninety years. Is the concern coming from an outside source, for example? Because if we were to use the Evangeline groundwater system, would we be their largest user?
Yes.
Yeah, we'd be their largest user. Right now, there's San Patz using it on a limited basis, I think we talked about in Sutton.
Yeah, so Sutton is Sutton's got one or two wells. Two. Come on up.
Uh, the Evangeline water supplier, Evangeline area, Sutton uses has two wells that provide water out of that aquifer. Yes, we would be the largest consumer of Evangeline groundwater in the area. We're talking about more than eighteen to twenty individual wells to get to a two twenty five MGD that they proposed to us. So some of the concerns from the hydrological point of view, again, was subsidence, was the water quality, was the drawdown? Because as you draw down the water, the water becomes more salinity, comes into the the system. So what kind of what kind of ramifications, how we can see that? And some of those are kind of the questions that we had in talking with their hydrology team.
So really, the bottom line is, is that they've never really had someone using an additional eighteen to twenty wells in in terms of tapping that amount of volume in that in in their particular, with their particular source.
That's exactly right.
So is the concern from, I I've heard that some of the surrounding communities, like San Pat, has a concern there because there's a possibility that we could actually harm their current existing water source. And there could be possibilities of maybe even causing issues as far as sinkholes and things of that nature. Is that what you're talking about?
So that's what we're talking about, subsidence. What kind of effects would that lead to with the geology of the area? And then you get to the questions of water quantity, quality, and reliability as you draw that source of water down in perpetuity.
So my next question is, outside of the Evangeline groundwater system, is there another groundwater system that's similar, that is tapping in, using eighteen to twenty wells out there in in our region that you're aware of? Like, does San Antonio, I I know they have seventeen different water sources, correct?
Yes, but now we're talking about an entirely different type of aquifer system. Aquifer, the water quality is entirely different when you start talking about San Antonio and the Edwards water, Edwards aquifer compared to the Evangeline aquifer.
So this is kind of new. This is a new frontier, if you want to call it, in terms of that value.
That's exactly right. And that's why we have to take a little time to do our due diligence. Ask the the right questions of the hydrology, work through our engineering firm, HDR, that is evaluating this, working what we would see in perpetuity before we get into a contractor we actually take this water off.
So there's a possibility at the end of the day, once you're done with your study, that you might say, well, you know what? We can, the system can handle eight wells, which would give us ten MGD, and and then evaluate, is it even worth it?
That is correct. We, what will be the balance? What will be the sweet spot of reliability, water quality going into the future? We don't know that exactly right now. That's why we need to continue with this evaluation.
Yeah. Well, keep us posted. I I, you know, I like the idea, and we've talked about this, of having different sources. And just keep us posted on it. Thank you.
Right.
Thank you, Councilman. Uh, Councilman Klein.
Thank you, Mayor. Mike, I don't want to get ahead of myself, but I think this is the, I think this is the last slide they had in your presentation. Is that correct? I think it was just a thank you.
Yes, this is the last slide, Dick.
Right. So so I want to make sure that we're not kind of missing anything as well. In these, again, diversified water portfolio, I don't hear anything, I don't see anything, I'm sorry, don't see anything mentioned about rainwater capture. Some of this mentioned about that, it gets earlier in public comment. Have you guys considered that, looked into that as well, or not?
We're not currently looking at rainwater capture. It's just, it it's probably a good idea in certain parts of the country, but when you get so little rain that we get here, I'm not really sure the cost and the benefit would 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 weigh out. Now, we are looking at effluent reuse. We're very aggressively looking at potential sites when we're communicating with businesses that are wanting to look here to to build something. The the three questions we're asking on water is, you want treated water? You want raw water? Or would you be willing to take effluent water? And so we've been recently getting some good responses on use of use of effluent. So we're looking at that. But as far as rainwater capture, no.
Yeah, I would recommend that that maybe gives me some thought to this because, again, this is to my untrained eye. We don't get much rain here, but then when we get rain, we get way too much.
Mm hmm.
And and it becomes a flooding problem, at least in, you know, for a short period of time. And so so there's no rain, no rain, no rain, way too much rain, and then no rain, no rain, no rain. So so I think that's something that perhaps to me to consider down the road. What about underground water storage? I think that's been talked about.
So we we are looking at that also, aquifer storage, we are. But I I just back to the rainwater capture, that's kind of, that's kind of how we get all of our water here, through our lakes and rivers. That's that, in in essence, is a rainwater capturing system. It's not structural in nature, but it is the idea that I think you're thinking about.
But I guess I want to think, maybe I'm thinking about this incorrectly. If if it, you had it, if you had structural rainwater capture, you'd be able to reduce or control the evaporation rate, which we can't control right now.
Possibly, you could.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah. I wanted to talk to you about a couple of other items as well, that again, I didn't see here. Also, so this is more of a water usage, but again, it's going to attack, affect our our water supply. And that is breaks in water lines. We talked about that before, I think a hundred and ninety miles of of cast iron water line here in Corpus Christi. And and there's, I know we had this conversation before offline by email. One particular site here in Corpus Christi, that I know of anyway, where there's been eighteen water breaks, water line breaks in the same place over a forty six year period.
Yeah.
So just about once every two years.
Yeah.
There's clearly something structural there that's going on, some some design flaw, I guess.
Right. Yeah, so the property you're talking about that is on our replacement schedule, it's just us getting to it.
Yeah.
So we are looking at that, and we do have that scheduled for replacement. That is a small water main system. What, when I say small, I'm talking about diameter of the existing pipe. And so it is old, and it is a very, I guess, hard to get to area where it's mostly inside people's backyards as as it kind of goes through this neighborhood. So we are working on it with our engineering department.
All right, good, thank you.
Yes, sir.
One other, one other, yes. So this was brought to my attention a couple of weeks ago. Councilman Roy was talking about other aquifers. The Catahoula Aquifer, southwest of Kingsville, has a potential water source for Corpus Christi. I haven't heard anything from staff about that. But I guess, again, from what I know, it is out there as another potential option as well. Have you given a serious exploration to that, or is there a?
We have met, we have met on that. Are you talking about the EV Ranch project?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we've met on that. We've, we're looking into that right now, on the table, as something that we're investigating.
Yeah, and it's quite a bit further away, but it's my understanding that, again, I want to understand that that some of the water transmission lines are already in place. So it's not as if you'd have to build.
Yeah. Yeah, that's through, I think that's through the South Texas water supply.
Right. Right. And that would be conceivably provide a water supply for the city faster than than desalination, which we're looking at for three, four, five years, I guess, something like that.
Right.
We don't, we don't know that for sure, Councilman. I mean, is this the one from Dr. Metz?
Yes.
Yeah, so this one, there's, just to remind the council, we have a team of professionals here that are either engineers, multiple engineer degrees, some of them. We have been at this for ten years, a decade, and we're focused, Murphy can't even, we're trying to get him through his five sources today. The city council has has given policy direction for the past four years that I've been here to focus on these, the two desal sites. We're adding the Evangeline site, we're adding, working with the Port of Corpus Christi. But if we start looking at all these options out there, which we've already looked at, nothing gets done under that scenario. But we have looked, we have met with Dr. Metz, who's representing that group. That one has no secure timeline, there's no easement rights, there's no water pumping rights. So that is just, we have more information on Evangeline, it's closer. It would probably be cheaper, but we don't know for sure. But just to remind the council, we, if we do too much, we don't get anything done. So that source we're aware of, we have given time to those operators. There's a lack of information, frankly, from a business standpoint, to include easement rights, pumping rights, cost. None of that's known. So what we don't want to do is drop everything we're working on and now go figure that one out because we need more water immediately. So things like our inner harbor desalinization site, the Evangeline, Evangeline groundwater site reuse and capture, storage and reuse, those are further ahead in in our analysis. So just to put that on the table.
Sure, yeah, I guess, again, my concern is that that, you know, we're making sure to look at, examine all the options available, all the possibilities. And I'm getting this from Dr. Metz, and so indicates anyway that this would be a cheaper source of water supply than seawater desalination.
He hasn't demonstrated that to us, Councilman, not even close. We met with them, there was no business proposal, no cost, no timeline, no statement of easement rights. So it sounds good when you meet with somebody like we have, but without the business facts, it's very speculative.
All right, thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Councilman Pusley.
Thank you, Peter. I'll be quick because it's almost two o'clock and.
You're hungry.
And I'm hungry. And we hadn't even got through with the city manager's report. Okay, I was going to ask about the same thing about Dr. Metz's deal, and I understand the complexity of that. But Peter, you and I talked about something the other day that I think we really ought to investigate. Michael, how many, how many, how much do we have available in the flint that we could sell to somebody on a daily basis?
We produce about thirty million gallons a day.
Okay, thirty million gallons a day, okay. A few years ago, not too many years back, Valero.
Let me check with Dr. Deng, I don't want to.
Okay.
I want thirty MGD.
Okay, good.
About thirty MGD, okay. Valero had put together a plan to purchase all of our flint from us to replace the the water that they're buying.
Right.
And for some reason, that died on the vine, and I don't know why. They were, they were ready to do it, they were going to.
Were they designed to pay for it?
They had already designed.
They already spent millions designing it. This is prior to my arrival and part of the, you know, the the other folks that were running the water department at the time. For some reason, they didn't pursue it.
Well, could we, could we reach out to them and find out?
We already have.
Yeah, we already have, and we'll see them again. We already are, Councilman, we're engaging them again.
Did they, did they give a reason why?
A reason why.
That they didn't go through with it?
The city didn't want to, the city leaders at the time, not you all, this side, didn't want to pursue it for some reason.
Well, that makes a lot of sense, right?
Right, that's why we have, you know, we mentioned it before, new people at the helm here in our CCW team. But they already have design plans. They were planning on taking water from the Greenwood Treatment Plant, which is the second largest in the city, and using it at their facility. And so we're going to, we have reengaged that conversation. We'll be seeing, right, folks this Friday with that team. That's what we need to be looking, that's a more reliable, available source.
Yeah.
And so we know.
And if they're ready to go on that, we can move on that pretty quick.
So we're looking at that. We do have a set of those plans. We're going through the legal conversations that happened back then as to why it sort of fell apart. Right, so we're reviewing that, but but we are actively engaged with.
So what are we doing with that affluent now?
So most of it goes into the bays and estuaries. We've got a couple of customers that we've already talked about. We've got golf courses and the cemetery that we're doing that with.
I knew the answer to that, I just wanted to hear you say it.
Can we say it again? And so, but like I said, so some of the, some of the developers that we've been talking to, we're asking them if they would be willing to use effluent. And the response we're getting now is very positive. And so those are conversations that may have a benefit. And so we're giving them the proximity of our of our water wastewater treatment facilities to see if that's something that is doable.
Well, if we could give that to Valero instead of dumping it into the back bay, I think that'd make a lot.
The bays and estuaries love that water, just so you know. We've already got concerns with them about giving too much over the way.
Yeah. Who who does?
Bays and estuaries, the people who are responsible.
They want it in the back bay.
They want that water. Because because to Dr. Deng's credit, we're turning out some very good quality water right now. And, yeah, so.
It hides the things that fish like.
They love that, right?
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir. Okay.
We've got one more. Councilman Campos, we're going to wrap this up.
Thank you again, Mike.
Yes, ma'am.
It's it's strange, but yeah, we were on the same line of thinking, Councilman Pusley, about the affluent water. So your, I think your colleague mentioned that we have about thirty MGDs of affluent water. But right now, you you don't know how much is is being used of that thirty? Do we know of the?
We do, we we know what we're sending to the, so we're sending it to Lozano, our golf course, to Oso Beach Golf Course, to the cemetery. We're sending water to to all three of those.
So.
And also Corpus Christi Country Club.
So how much of affluent water are we actually using? I mean, I know you mentioned those places, but how much?
We, I think we sent that to you, didn't we send that? Pretty sure we did. So I'll I'll double check on that, but I thought I sent that to you in a memo, but I'll follow, I'll follow up.
Yeah, and the other thing is too, you mentioned that you had sent also the other, the ten water users. I was checking while you were giving your, we were giving the report here, and I I couldn't find it either. I couldn't find it on my email list, so, yes, I, okay, I'd appreciate that.
Yeah, so right now, we are sending our affluent water about seven hundred thousand gallons per day to golf course. And also, I think two weeks ago, the cemetery veteran, they're asking for us to provide affluent water. We will provide affluent water to them probably very quickly. The reason is we are, our wastewater plant is in upgrading. So I think within two or three weeks, we will continue to provide affluent water to the veteran cemetery.
How much again, did you say?
Totally every day is about seven hundred thousand gallons per day.
Seven hundred thousand?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, go ahead, Mike.
Okay, so wrapping this, ACR's next steps are to confirm delivery location for costs, costing with city staff, so we can work and incorporate them into this study on the Mary Road Pipeline. The Barney Davis site, we continue to work with HDR on that. We're finalizing the report of their desktop survey, and we plan to start seeing if there's any interest in touring the Barney Davis site once we get that, the the final documents. And we're looking somewhere next week or two to have have that final. And we're looking somewhere next week or two to have, have that final document to go over. La Quinta permits, as we all know, are underway. It is our hope that later this summer, we should, we are looking forward to having an approved intake permit for the La Quinta site. Our big project right now that we're working on, in addition to the project with the, with the port, is the Inner Harbor site. As, as you all know, we've been granted permits back in October. Leadership from the city and the port have begun touring the Inner Harbor site. Most of the council has been, has taken those tours with us. From the port, we had Council, Commissioner Guerra and CEO Strawberry both attend one of those tours, and so we will also, if, if there is an interest, conduct, conduct additional tours of the Inner Harbor site, so you can kind of get an idea of what we've been talking about all this time. And as your regional water provider, Corpus Christi Water aims to have a regional center in, in the Inner Harbor site for education and conservation, with zero scape principles guiding our, our decisions for planting in the area. We'll also increase the street lighting around the facility and in the area, and then we're looking forward to planting bike paths in addition to the water treatment plant site that will connect to the bridge parks. And so those are some of the things that we've been looking at. And then in the very near future, our, our engineer of record, Friesen Nichols, working with their architectural group, will come to you with some substantial renderings of what a potential site would look like on the Inner Harbor property. So that is the end of my presentation, so, thank you.
Okay.
Ray, Ray, that concludes the city manager's report, and we appreciate the attendance to do it, and it was a longer one today, but. Ray.
Work fast.
Listening.
There they are. Okay, thank you, Mike, and team, thank you all for being here. So at this time, excuse me, the council's going to go into executive session on item number thirty, per Texas government code sections five five one point zero seven one and five five one point zero seven four. When we return, Peter, we'll do Wendy Herman, she's walking off, her legislative briefing. Thank you, we'll return.
Life is made easy with 3-1-1, a fast and reliable way to report a problem and get information on city services. Everything from street repairs, gas or water leaks, animal care services, or even information on your trash pickup schedule. Call 3-1-1 or download the MyCC311 app and get instant access to create service requests, upload information and photos, and submit your location to alert us to the area. 3-1-1 provides solutions to everyday problems, anytime, anywhere, on any device. Get better quality, better service, and better results. Life made easy with 3-1-1. Download MyCC311 app today. This is our home, full of fun in the sun and in the water, but we need your help to keep our bayfront clean. Nature has its way of recycling water. It evaporates and comes back in the form of rain. It filters through the soil into water tables. Without thinking, people contaminate nature's cycle by dumping unwanted chemicals in the storm drain. Things like grass clippings, fertilizer, paint, and oil from your car are not meant to be washed out into the curb and into the street, because they keep the city's stormwater drainage system from working properly. Ultimately, they contaminate our ocean, bays, and groundwater. Remember, clean bays start at home, so do your part to keep things running smoothly and keeping things out of the gutter, to help keep our city beautiful. Only rain down the storm drain.
Many households in our community rely on natural gas. It's important to know how to detect a gas leak and how to report it. You can detect gas leaks through sight, smell, and sound. If you see dead vegetation near a pipeline, smell rotting eggs, or hear a hissing noise, there could be a leak nearby. Make sure to leave the area immediately. If you suspect a gas leak, call the gas department at 3-1-1. Do not light a match, and avoid using any electrical switches, so you don't create a spark that could start a fire. Also, avoid driving into the area, your vehicle's engine may ignite the vapors. And do not attempt to extinguish any fire that might start. Natural gas is a part of the city of Corpus Christi's utility system, and keeping our residents safe is our top priority. For more information, visit ccTexas.com/gas.
Adopting an animal from Corpus Christi Animal Care Services is fast, easy, and affordable. All you need is a valid ID, and you must be eighteen years or older. The adoption fee is twenty-five dollars, which includes spay and neuter surgery, age-appropriate vaccinations, and a microchip. Come by CCACS located at twenty-six twenty-six Holly Road. You can meet and greet all the animals that are available for adoption. You can also go to twenty-fourpetconnect.com. This website has pictures and other detailed information about our pets, and will help you decide what animal you would like to bring home. All adoptions are required to be completed in person. CCACS adoption hours are Monday through Saturday from 1:00 p.m. to 4:30 p.m. Find your forever best friend at Corpus Christi Animal Care Services, caring for our animals one paw at a time. When emergencies strike, stay informed with Reverse Alert. Everything from incoming severe weather, traffic alerts, police and fire activity, industry alerts, and citywide information. Reverse Alert will provide you time-sensitive information to keep you safe. Signing up is a fast and easy process. Text BREADYCCNC to eight 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 seven seven seven, or visit ccTexas.com/alertsignup. Choose to receive notifications by phone call, text, or email. And with fully customizable options, you pick what notifications you want to receive. And you can designate what hours of the day that you don't want to be disturbed. Stay informed, stay aware, stay alert. Sign up for Reverse Alert today.
I, Brandon Wade.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear. I had worked for the city of Austin and the Austin Fire Department for almost twenty-five years, where I rose through the ranks and ultimately became the assistant chief over operations. I'm really looking forward to working with the department and continuing on the initiative to achieve four-person staffing, and it is going to be a multi-year process with it, but the city's made great investments to achieve that goal, and I look to help to further advance the department in that direction, as well as continuing the initiative in which doing station renovations and building some new stations out there to update the fire facilities for the men and women who work for the Corpus Christi Fire Department. I'm excited to be here, I'm, I'm excited to be the fire chief for the community of Corpus Christi, and I look forward to just great things and tremendous opportunity here in the city.
So have you got it.
So have you got it.
My name is Drew Molly. I'm the director of Water Systems and Support Services for Corpus Christi Water. I'm standing here at Choke Canyon. It's one of four drinking water sources. It's one of the most important water reservoirs for our city of Corpus Christi. If you look behind me, you'll see these buoys that are laying on the ground. These buoys are typically floating on the water surface, which indicates that the reservoir is significantly lower than where it normally is. As you may be aware, the city of Corpus Christi is in stage one water restrictions, and so we're asking everybody to do their part to conserve water. We urge you to save water, and we appreciate your efforts.
Corpus Christi Water believes in zero scape as the water-saving way to go when designing a home garden. It's a style of drought-resistant landscaping that uses plants that need very little water. Using zero scape concepts can reduce the amount of water used to irrigate. Zero scape. It saves time, it saves money, but most importantly, it saves water. For more information, go to corpuschristiwater.com and follow us on Facebook and Twitter.
The mobile clinic is a new initiative by the Corpus Christi Noises County Public Health District. It's an attempt to meet the people where they are. As you know, our resources are limited, the community is limited by the transport, so we want to take our bus to them. We want to provide services where they are, meet their needs where they are. So our van is going to provide immunizations, both COVID, flu, and also childhood vaccinations. We've also offered to the community to tell us what other needs do they have and how we can fill them.
For the mobile clinic services, we do have a registration process, so you'll fill out any type of paper form for either the A1C screening, a COVID booster shot, or a flu shot, and everything is at no cost. Well, if you need help filling out the forms, we'll be able to fill out, help you fill out forms as well. No ID is required if you are getting a booster shot, and you do have your previous shot records, I would ask to bring those in. Other than that, just bring yourself, and we're just here to help anybody and everyone that we can.
Oh, it was a good experience. I myself don't have insurance at the moment, so when I heard about it, I thought I'd come out here and take advantage of what's offered to the public. So, yeah, it was a great experience for me.
The Corpus Christi Noises County Public Health District, it's hosting its annual public health fair. The theme of the fair is Tour Your Health District. We want to reconnect with our community. We want the community to come and meet us, learn more about our services.
The community was invited to come and look at the different services that we have to offer that belongs to them, right? Our health department has always been public health-driven, and it's also been community-driven. By allowing us to showcase our services, you're also able to see who works for you here at the health department, right? You get, you're able to meet the managers, you're able to meet patient navigators, you're able to meet our nurses, our clinical staff, you also get to meet the director and assistant director, people that are here to help you with all of the services.
We are also offering screenings such as cholesterol, BMI, education, and immunizations. We want to connect with our community, and we want to offer services at no cost.
Part of what Tour Your Health District is to also be able to get familiar with some of the other different programs that we have. We have our public health education program, we have our immunizations program, we have the laboratory services program, we have diabetes, cholesterol, chronic diseases, all of those things are education, is to protect you. At the end of the day, it's to protect our community.
So at the end of the tour, the participants can also receive the Community Resource Guide.
The Community Resource Guide allows us to, again, be able to showcase those, those services to the community, right? We're able to put it in a condensed version, where they can get referrals to clinical services, where they can get referrals to housing assistance. All of those different services that are available are going to be in our Community Resource Guide. It's available here at the health department, so if somebody needs one, they can come by, we can print them out a copy of it. They can also find it online at ccTexas.com/health. This is at the health department, we're located at seventeen oh two Horn Road, and we're open to the public, we're open to you, so please come and visit us.
Our pets are always on the run, and it's easy for them to get away from us. Get your pet microchip to ensure the best chance of them returning home. A pet microchip is a small electronic chip that is quickly implanted under your pet's skin, giving them a permanent identification number and increasing the likelihood that your furry friend will be found. Corpus Christi Animal Care Services offers free microchipping, Monday through Friday, from 1:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. at twenty-six twenty-six Holly Road. The procedure is fast, painless, and free, and it never needs to be replaced. Visit ccTexas.com and click on Animal Services, or call three six one eight two six four six three zero to register your pet's information. Corpus Christi Animal Care Services, caring for our animals one paw at a time. Your safety is important at Corpus Christi beaches. A beach warning flag system is in place to let you know what weather conditions you can expect before getting into the water. There are five different beach warning flags. The main three are green, yellow, and red. Green means go, the water is calm and it is safe to swim, just swim with care. Yellow means caution, the waves are getting bigger and there may be a small rip current. We recommend adult or lifeguard supervision while swimming. Red means stop, danger is ahead, the surf is dangerous with strong winds, big waves. The surf is dangerous with strong winds, big waves, and strong rip currents. Do not enter the ocean in red flag conditions unless you are a very strong swimmer. And do not let your kids swim at all. The last two flags are purple and orange. Purple indicates the presence of harmful sea animals, jellyfish, sharks, or other venomous marine life have been spotted close to shore. And orange means there is an environmental hazard in the air or water quality. The conditions are not safe for your health. Make sure to check the weather and water conditions when heading out to the beach. Follow us on Facebook at Corpus Christi Beaches, or visit ccTexas.com/Beaches for daily warning flag updates and surf conditions.
Whether you're a homeowner planting a tree or contractor working on a job site, always call 811 at least two days before you dig. It's free, it's easy, and it's the law. Call 811 to provide dig location and project information. A specialist will then come to your location and mark the underground line, allowing you to work safely without any delay. Your safety is our priority. Know what's below, and call 811 before you dig.
Corpus Christi Water is here to demonstrate how to look at your water meter to spot potential water loss from leaky pipes. First, turn off all water fixtures, including faucets, hoses, ice makers, and irrigation systems. Next, locate your water meter. Corpus Christi water meters will always be in the utility easement, which may be in the front of your home or in your backyard. Remove the meter box lid. On the top of the meter, there is a register with numbers. These numbers show how much water is being used. Each meter will also have a flow indicator with a red line or possibly a small red triangle. A flow indicator that is not moving indicates that no water is going through your meter, and you do not have a leak. If the flow indicator is moving, water is flowing through your system even though you turned off all fixtures. This means you may have a leak. Look for a leak in or around your home and repair it as soon as possible, or contact a certified plumber for help. If you have any issues with your water or wastewater, please dial 311.
Fostering a pet means that you take care of the pet until they find a forever home and can help ensure that each pet finds an ideal home by matching their personality with a home that best suits them. Adopting a pet is a big decision, and fostering is a great way to learn about owning a pet before making your decision. CCACS provides everything you need to foster an animal. All fosters must be at least 18 years old, and submit a foster care application and review the foster care agreement. By taking care of these animals in need, you're creating kennel space at CCACS, allowing us to help more homeless animals. Animals in foster care tend to be less stressed, better socialized, and have a lower chance of getting sick than animals in a shelter. For more information, call 361-826-4606, or email ccacrescues@ccTexas.com. Corpus Christi Animal Care Services. Caring for our animals, one paw at a time.
I'm Hasil from Corpus Christi Water. Another exceptional drought is affecting major parts of our water sources. In order to conserve water, Corpus Christi Water recommends you to drought-proof your home while we drought-proof our water sources. Saving water means that we have more water for home use, keeping businesses and hospitals running, and fighting fires. So here's a tip. Shorten your shower. Visit ccTexas.com/conserv for more information.
The cost of repairing or replacing leaky or old gas lines could be too much for some residents of Corpus Christi. The city of Corpus Christi, in partnership with NextTerra, is here to help you. The Plumbers to People program is dedicated to the safety and well-being of Corpus Christi residents by helping with repairs for their homes. We have partnered with multiple plumbers in the community to repair and replace old leaking gas lines free of charge to the consumer. The purpose of the program is to bring peace of mind to the community and offer support to those in need. To learn more, contact 826-CITY. The Plumbers to People program is here to help you. Before you head out to the beach, make sure you grab your beach permit. For only $12, this permit provides access to explore and enjoy miles of our local beaches. Permits are required, so be sure to display the sticker on your vehicle. All the funds from the permit sales will be used to provide clean and safe beaches for all our visitors to enjoy. The permit is good until December 31st, so come back and visit us as often as you like.
Did you know you can submit a request for city services in just a few minutes using your phone? Download the free MyCC311 app to get started. Quickly report issues such as street maintenance, water or gas issues, garbage pickup, code violations, or animal care services. The MyCC311 app is easy to use. Upload information and photos, identify the location, hit submit, and you're all done. Life made easy with 311. Download the MyCC311 app today.
Hola, mi nombre es María Corona. Soy ingeniera con la ciudad de Corpus Christi en Corpus Christi Water. Estoy aquí en el lago de Corpus Christi, o el Lake Corpus Christi. Este lago es uno de los lagos que proporciona agua a más de medio millón de personas en la región, justo en la región, incluyendo la ciudad de Corpus Christi. Este lago es parte de la fuente de agua de cual vendemos todos los días para nuestra salud y necesidades de todos los días. De parte de Corpus Christi Water, por favor conserven el agua porque cada gota cuenta. Gracias.
The city of Corpus Christi reminds you there are small, everyday ideas you can use to protect us from drought-related water shortages. Inside your home, install modernized plumbing, low-flow showerheads, and simply turn off the faucet when not in use. Outside your home, make smart landscaping choices, limit your watering, and don't water during the hottest part of the day. Simple choices that will save water for the community and save money on your utility bill. We can all drink to that.
If you find a wandering pet and want to help return them to its owner, there are a few ways you can help. Go to 24petconnect.com to report the missing animal. You can submit photos, detailed information about the animal, and add your contact information. You can also contact the Lost Pet Hotline at 361-882-7387. They're a private group that assists in finding lost pets. Every second matters, so make sure to report a missing pet as soon as possible to help reunite them with their family.
The city of Corpus Christi is proud to introduce a new 311 call center. What is 311? It's an easy-to-remember citizen's hotline to report non-emergencies or ask questions about city services. You can report problems and create service requests, check the status of issues, and obtain general information without tying up emergency lines. All you need to do is dial 311, and you will be connected with a trained customer service agent who can help you with all types of issues like reporting potholes in your neighborhood, illegal dumping, graffiti, animal cruelty, and much more. Have a question about your utility bill? Or need to find out if it's your day for garbage or recycling collection? That's right, 311 will give you that information and much more. There's also a free 311 mobile app available in the App Store and Google Play Store. App users can snap pictures and upload them with complaints and requests, and even track the progress from start to finish. Another way to access 311 is by going to 311.cctexas.com. This option allows you to send in your requests online and has a live chat feature where you can chat instantly with a call center representative to help you with any questions you need answered. The 311 call center is open Monday through Friday from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. The 311 service is part of an ongoing effort by the city of Corpus Christi to make city government easier and more responsive to the needs of residents, business owners, and visitors. Corpus Christi 311, where solutions start with a call. Corpus Christi Water is here to demonstrate how to look at your water meter to spot potential water loss from leaky pipes. First, turn off all water fixtures, including faucets, hoses, ice makers, and irrigation systems. Next, locate your water meter. Corpus Christi water meters will always be in the utility easement, which may be in the front of your home or in your backyard. Remove the meter box lid. On the top of the meter, there is a register with numbers. These numbers show how much water is being used. Each meter will also have a flow indicator with a red line or possibly a small red triangle. A flow indicator that is not moving indicates that no water is going through your meter, and you do not have a leak. If the flow indicator is moving, water is flowing through your system even though you turned off all fixtures. This means you may have a leak. Look for a leak in or around your home and repair it as soon as possible, or contact a certified plumber for help. If you have any issues with your water or wastewater, please dial 311.
The villages at McCartell offer 82 1, 2, and 3-bedroom apartment homes for low-income families. We have a playground, we have a fitness center, we have a food bank where we do food bank distributions. We have a community learning center. We have an area for children with our resident services coordinator.
It has after-school care, which is a really big important portion, because we don't want our kids to be not supervised after school and making sure that those children are going to thrive. It's close to transportation, so one of the biggest components of sustainable development is to make sure that those residents are able to transport themselves to better-paying jobs.
There's just such a great need for affordable housing. And the great need coupled with the services that we provide make it a nice partnership and a really quality place to live.
It wasn't until I became a council member that I am seeing how much the city is doing, you know, for its citizens. Having your own home and having this kind of protection is priceless.
If you take a look at the property, you would never think that it's affordable housing. This is just like any other market-rate property that's around the corner.
It wouldn't have been possible without the city's help, without RTA, without HUD. It's vitally important for us all to just get together and celebrate a win.
The city of Corpus Christi's Park and Recreation Department wants to remind the community of our stunning off-street hike and bike trail system. With seven trails to choose from, you and the family are sure to have a wonderful time biking while enjoying a tremendous fitness and recreation experience. If you're looking for a scenic route, the Corpus Christi Bay Trail is a great route to explore. It is eight miles long and runs from the Art Museum of South Texas to Texas A&amp;M University Corpus Christi. This trail boasts beautiful bay views along with seven parks on the route, including Cole Park and North Bayfront Park. If an eight-mile trek is too ambitious for you, consider enjoying the fresh coastal breeze in the shadow of the USS Lexington as you stroll down the Corpus Christi Beach Walk on North Beach. For residents looking for a bike trail on the south side of town, the Bear Creek Hike and Bike Trail connects parks, schools, and neighborhoods between Bill Witt and Osso Creek Parks. The one-and-a-half-mile path is great for all ages to enjoy. Nearby are the off-road bike trails, which are part of the Osso Creek Park and will eventually connect with the Bear Creek Trail. These bike trails follow the natural terrain as it transitions from South Texas brushland down to the Osso Creek. Another trail to consider is the Shannon Hike and Bike Trail, which runs from Yorktown and Saratoga Boulevard along the Shannon Storm Waterway. It is over a mile-long gravel and concrete trail
that connects many parks along its route. The Hans and Pat Suter Wildlife Refuge Trails offers nature lovers an ideal spot to ride along Osso Bay. Along the one-mile trail, you can observe many kinds of birds and other wildlife as you cruise through the grassy marshes and woodlands in the area. If you're looking for a bike trail on the west side part of town, then look no further than Salinas Park. Located on Airport Road and Horn Road, it offers a 93-acre sports complex, complete with a play-for-all playground and splash pad with a one-mile bike trail wrapping around the entire park. Located in northwest Corpus Christi, the trail at West Guth Park is another great way to enjoy time with the family and get in a great workout. It offers a wide-open park experience with natural environment and wildlife views. Take some bird seeds and you can feed the ducks at the pond. All these trails provide a convenient way to exercise and connect our community to the places where we live, learn, and play. So grab your bike today and make our parks and trails your everyday outdoor gym. For more information on bikes and trails in our city, visit cctexas.com.
If your pet goes missing, make sure to immediately alert the vet and microchip company. Check online at 24petconnect.com. There you can check the database of found animals, view photos, and submit a lost pet notice. Pet photos and information are updated daily. Go to Corpus Christi Animal Care Services at 2626 Holly Road to see if your pet has been found. Ask your neighbors immediately if they've seen your pet. Your furry friend could be close by. Check social media and see if someone has posted about a missing pet. Run an ad in the local newspaper or post signs or posters in places like vet clinics, laundromats, groomers, and dog parks. Do not give up. Corpus Christi Animal Care Services is here to help you. Contact us today.
The renovation project consists of the practice facility at the LaZona Golf Center and what used to be the Executive Nine-Hole Golf Course. We are thankful that the city of Corpus Christi has embraced this project and recognizes the value of golf to its citizens and tourists. And we're just so excited about a complete redo of the golf course and the practice facility. Up until this project, it was literally a flat piece of ground with nine little bitty push-up greens. The only thing that was irrigated were a couple of sprinkler heads. We've selected premium turf grasses for the golf course. We're going to use Platinum TE Seashore Passphalam on the greens, and we're going to use Celebration Bermuda Grass for tees, fairways, and rough. We're moving approximately 80,000 cubic yards of earth on just a nine-hole project. And the second part of the project is both the practice facility and the Firefly Golf Course are going to be lit at night. We're lighting 41 acres so that hours can be extended concerning the practice facility. Our present facility has 35 hitting stations, which as part of this project, we're going to expand to 50 hitting stations. Our range floor is now going to have target greens that are going to be shaped in similar to the greens on the golf course and the greens on the Firefly Golf Course, so that it'll be a real practice experience. We're going to have two chipping greens with chipping fairways, and we'll also have two bunkers so people can work on their sand game. We're working our way through the golf course, and we're about to complete the third hole shaping from tee to green. Then we plant the grass. And our target is to have all of the facilities planted by the end of May, once they reopen. We're targeting the first of September. We think that it will be another entertainment venue opportunity for the people that are here visiting. We just hope to add to the great package that Corpus Christi has for great things to do.
The city of Corpus Christi is proud to introduce a new 311 call center. What is 311? It's an easy-to-remember citizens hotline to report non-emergencies or ask questions about city services. You can report problems and create service requests, check the status of issues, and obtain general information without tying up emergency lines. All you need to do is dial 311, and you will be connected with a trained customer service agent who can help you with all types of issues like reporting potholes in your neighborhood, illegal dumping, graffiti, animal cruelty, and much more. Have a question about your utility bill? Or need to find out if it's your day for garbage or recycling collection? That's right, 311 will give you that information and much more. There's also a free 311 mobile app available in the App Store and Google Play Store. App users can snap pictures and upload them with complaints and requests, and even track the progress from start to finish. Another way to access 311 is by going to 311.cctexas.com. This option allows you to send in your requests online and has a live chat feature where you can chat instantly with a call center representative to help you with any questions you need answered. The 311 call center is open Monday through Friday from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. The 311 service is part of an ongoing effort by the city of Corpus Christi to make city government easier and more responsive to the needs of residents, business owners, and visitors. Corpus Christi 311, where solutions start with a call.
We are having what's called a Xeriscap Work Day. We've got lots of volunteers here. We've got Xeriscap committee members. We've got master gardeners that are here. The word Xeriscap comes from the "zero" word, which means low water. The idea behind a Xeriscap garden is that you can put in things that work really well that do not require huge amounts of water.
We are in an environmentally sensitive area where it pertains to water. It's always on our minds. We don't get as much water as, say, East Texas. We are drought-prone, and so we need to learn how to better utilize the rainfall that happens. This is a learning garden for people to come down and learn how to use the low amount of water that we naturally get here in the coastal bend to achieve a great color, a great environment on the outside of their homes, and also achieving the ability to lower their costs and water usage.
All of the plants that we have today are all very well-adapted for our climate. Some are natives, others are not, but they all are very suited to this climate. All these plants meet the guidelines for stage-one water restrictions. You could put in a Xeriscap garden like this and meet those guidelines easily.
Corpus Christi Water is a proud sponsor of the Xeriscap Garden. It's a great place to find those aesthetic outside beautiful plants and varieties of grasses that have deep root systems that can save time and water.
There's 18,000 square feet of plants that you can enjoy down here. It's open year-round to the public and easy access. So if you're interested in coming down, it's at 1900 North Chaparral Street.
Watch our social media for upcoming Xeriscap Garden Workdays.
The city of Corpus Christi reminds you there are small, everyday ideas you can use to protect us from drought-related water shortages. Inside your home, install modernized plumbing, low-flow showerheads, and simply turn off the faucet when not in use. Outside your home, make smart landscaping choices, limit your watering, and don't water during the hottest part of the day. Simple choices that will save water for the community and save money on your utility bill. We can all drink to that.
A major issue at recycling facilities today is when plastic shopping bags are incorrectly added to the recycling bin. Plastic bags are accepted at many retail or grocery store recycling drop-off bins, but these items are not accepted in your local recycling program. When recycling plastic bags and overwrap at these retail drop-off locations, it is important to remove any receipts or stickers from the plastic and make sure it is clean and dry. The types of soft plastic accepted at these drop-off locations include thin plastic shopping bags, zip-top storage bags, bubble wrap, plastic mailers, and plastic overwrap packaging. The key to becoming a better recycler is to sort your waste correctly so you can recycle more. This helps reduce your waste in landfills and has a positive impact on the environment. Thank you for recycling. It is important to shut off your property's water flow if your pipes are frozen or losing water. First, locate your water meter box. Sometimes it is in the back of the property or close to the street. Once you locate your water meter box, carefully remove the lid because there is a wire connected to the transmission unit that is connected to the register. Do not disconnect this wire. You may have to remove debris or leaves from the valve and the register. Locate the water main shut-off valve. The valve will be pointing towards the property when you open the meter box. Using a crescent wrench or a tool, turn the valve 90 degrees to the right, and the valve will be pointing left to right when you are finished. Do not use pliers to turn the valve. Next, go inside your property and check the faucets. Make sure no water is flowing. If water is still flowing, the valve needs to be turned to the right to completely shut off water flow. For more information, visit the city's website at www.cctexas.com/waterboil or call 361-826-CITY. That's 826-2489. A major issue at recycling facilities today is when plastic shopping bags are incorrectly added to the recycling bin. Plastic bags are accepted at many retail or grocery store recycling drop-off bins, but these items are not accepted in your local recycling program. When recycling plastic bags and overwrap at these retail drop-off locations, it is important to remove any receipts or stickers from the plastic and make sure it is clean and dry. The types of soft plastic accepted at these drop-off locations include thin plastic shopping bags, zip-top storage bags, bubble wrap, plastic mailers, and plastic overwrap packaging. The key to becoming a better recycler is to sort your waste correctly so you can recycle more. This helps reduce your waste in landfills and has a positive impact on the environment. Thank you for recycling. You can submit a city service request quickly and easily by downloading the MyCC 311 app on your phone. Reporting street problems, tall grass, gas or water issues, or other concerns is simple on the 311 app. Just choose from a list of services, add a photo, answer a few short questions, mark your location, and hit Submit. Everything you need in just a few minutes. Life is made easy with 311. Download the MyCC 311 app today.
Lace up your shoes and air up your tires for the Safe, Fun, Fit Endurance Fest. This three-day event takes place on June 2nd, 3rd, and 4th at the Waters Edge Park downtown. Light up the night during the 5K Glow Run on Friday, June 2nd at 6:30 p.m. Test your endurance in the 10K Half Marathon and Relay on Saturday, June 3rd starting at 7:00 a.m. And ride out the weekend with the On the Edge Bike Tour Sunday, June 4th at 7:30 a.m. Sign up today at vfitproductions.com. Stay active, stay healthy, stay fit at Safe, Fun, Fit Endurance Fest.
We've all dealt with the hassles of traveling. Traffic, long lines, security, layovers. What if there was a smarter way? When you fly out of Corpus Christi International Airport, you get all the modern amenities you love with the stress-free convenience of flying locals, so you can skip the hassle and get right to the good parts: taking off and returning home. Fly smarter, not harder, at flyccia.com.
Life is made easy with 311, a fast and reliable way to report a problem and get information on city services. Everything from street repairs, gas or water leaks, animal care services, or even information on your trash pickup schedule. Call 311 or download the MyCC 311 app and get instant access to create service requests, upload information and photos, and submit your location to alert us to the area. 311 provides solutions to everyday problems, anytime, anywhere, on any device. Get better quality, better service, and better results. Life made easy with 311. Download MyCC 311 app today.
This is our home, full of fun in the sun and in the water, but we need your help to keep our bayfront clean. Nature has its way of recycling water. It evaporates and comes back in the form of rain. It filters through the soil into water tables. Without thinking, people contaminate nature's cycle by dumping unwanted chemicals in the storm drain. Things like grass clippings, fertilizer, paint, and oil from your car are not meant to be washed out into the curb and into the street because they keep the city's stormwater drainage system from working properly. Ultimately, they contaminate our ocean, bays, and groundwater. Remember, clean bays start at home, so do your part to keep things running smoothly and keeping things out of the gutter to help keep our city beautiful. Only rain down the storm drain.
Many households in our community rely on natural gas. It's important to know how to detect a gas leak and how to report it. You can detect gas leaks through sight, smell, and sound. If you see dead vegetation near a pipeline, smell rotting eggs, or hear a hissing noise, there could be a leak nearby. Make sure to leave the area immediately. If you suspect a gas leak, call the gas department at 311. Do not light a match, and avoid using any electrical switches so you don't create a spark that could start a fire. Also, avoid driving into the area. Your vehicle's engine may ignite the vapors. And do not attempt to extinguish any fire that might start. Natural gas is a part of the City of Corpus Christi's utility system, and keeping our residents safe is our top priority. For more information, visit cctexas.com/gas.
Adopting an animal from Corpus Christi Animal Care Services is fast, easy, and affordable. All you need is a valid ID, and you must be 18 years or older. The adoption fee is $25, which includes spay and neuter surgery, age-appropriate vaccinations, and a microchip. Come by CCACS located at 2626 Holly Road. You can meet and greet all the animals that are available for adoption. You can also go to 24petconnect.com. This website has pictures and other detailed information about our pets, and will help you decide what animal you would like to bring home. All adoptions are required to be completed in person. CCACS adoption hours are Monday through Saturday from 1:00 PM to 4:30 PM. Find your forever best friend at Corpus Christi Animal Care Services. Caring for our animals, one paw at a time. When emergencies strike, stay informed with Reverse Alert. Everything from incoming severe weather, traffic alerts, police and fire activity, industry alerts, and citywide information. Reverse Alert will provide you time-sensitive information to keep you safe. Signing up is a fast and easy process. Text BREADYCCNC to 888-777, or visit cctexas.com/alertsignup. Choose to receive notifications by phone call, text, or email. And with fully customizable options, you pick what notifications you want to receive. And you can designate what hours of the day that you don't want to be disturbed. Stay informed, stay aware, stay alert. Sign up for Reverse Alert today.
I'm Brandon Wade.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear. I had worked for the City of Austin and the Austin Fire Department for almost 25 years, where I rose through the ranks and ultimately became the Assistant Chief over Operations. I'm really looking forward to working with the department and continuing on the initiative to achieve four-person staffing. And it is going to be a multi-year process with it, but the city's made great investments to achieve that goal, and I look to help to further advance the department in that direction, as well as continuing the initiative in which doing station renovations and building some new stations out there to update the fire facilities for the men and women who work for the Corpus Christi Fire Department. I'm excited to be here. I'm excited to be the fire chief for the community of Corpus Christi, and I look forward to just great things and tremendous opportunity here in the city.
So help me God.
So help me God.
My name is Drew Molly. I'm the Director of Water Systems and Support Services for Corpus Christi Water. I'm standing here at Choak Canyon. It's one of four drinking water sources. It's one of the most important water reservoirs for our city of Corpus Christi. If you look behind me, you'll see these buoys that are laying on the ground. These buoys are typically floating on the water's surface, which indicates that the reservoir is significantly lower than where it normally is. As you may be aware, the City of Corpus Christi is in Stage 1 water restrictions, and so we're asking everybody to do their part to conserve water. We urge you to save water, and we appreciate your efforts.
Corpus Christi Water believes in zero scape as the water-saving way to go when designing a home garden. It's a style of drought-resistant landscaping that uses plants that need very little water. Using zero scape concepts can reduce the amount of water used to irrigate. Zero scape. It saves time, it saves money, but most importantly, it saves water. For more information, go to corpuschristiwater.com and follow us on Facebook and Twitter.
The mobile clinic is a new initiative by the Corpus Christi Noises County Public Health District. It's an attempt to meet the people where they are. As you know, our resources are limited. The community is limited by the transport, so we want to take our bus to them. We want to provide services where they are, meet their needs where they are. So our van is going to provide immunizations, both COVID, flu, and also childhood vaccinations. We've also offered to the community to tell us what other needs do they have and how we can fill them.
For the mobile clinic services, we do have a registration process, so you'll fill out any type of paper form for either the A1C screening, a COVID booster shot, or a flu shot. And everything is at no cost. Well, if you need help filling out the forms, we'll be able to help you fill out forms as well. No ID is required. If you are getting a booster shot and you do have your previous shot records, I would ask to bring those in. Other than that, just bring yourself, and we're just here to help anybody and everyone that we can.
Oh, it was a good experience. I myself don't have insurance at the moment, so when I heard about it, I thought I'd come out here and take advantage of what's offered to the public. So yeah, it was a great experience for me.
The Corpus Christi Noises County Public Health District is hosting its annual Public Health Fair. The theme of the fair is Tour Your Health District. We want to reconnect with our community. We want the community to come and meet us, learn more about our services.
The community was invited to come and look at the different services that we have to offer that belongs to them, right? Our health department has always been public health-driven, and it's also been community-driven. By allowing us to showcase our services, you're also able to see who works for you here at the health department, right? You're able to meet the managers, you're able to meet patient navigators, you're able to meet our nurses, our clinical staff. You also get to meet the director and assistant director, people that are here to help you with all of those services.
We're also offering screenings such as cholesterol, BMI, education, and immunization. We want to connect with our community, and we want to offer services at no cost.
Part of what Tour Your Health District is to also be able to get familiar with some of the other different programs that we have. We have our public health education program. We have our immunizations program. We have the laboratory services program. We have diabetes, cholesterol, chronic diseases. All of those things are education, is to protect you. At the end of the day, it's to protect our community.
So at the end of the tour, the participants can also receive the Community Resource Guide.
The Community Resource Guide allows us to, again, be able to showcase those services to the community, right? We're able to put it in a condensed version where they can get referrals to clinical services, where they can get referrals to housing assistance. All of those different services that are available are going to be in our Community Resource Guide. It's available here at the health department. So if somebody needs one, they can come by, we can print them out a copy of it. They can also find it online at cctexas.com/health. Visitors at the health department, we're located at 1702 Horn Road, and we're open to the public. We're open to you, so please come and visit us.
Our pets are always on the run, and it's easy for them to get away from us. Get your pet microchip to ensure the best chance of them returning home. A pet microchip is a small electronic chip that is quickly implanted under your pet's skin, giving them a permanent identification number and increasing the likelihood that your furry friend will be found. Corpus Christi Animal Care Services offers free microchipping Monday through Friday from 1:00 PM to 4:00 PM at 2626 Holly Road. The procedure is fast, painless, and free, and it never needs to be replaced. Visit cctexas.com and click on Animal Services, or call 361-826-4630 to register your pet's information. Corpus Christi Animal Care Services. Caring for our animals, one paw at a time. Your safety is important at Corpus Christi Beaches. A beach warning flag system is in place to let you know what weather conditions you can expect before getting into the water. There are five different beach warning flags. The main three are green, yellow, and red. Green means go. The water is calm and it is safe to swim. Just swim with care. Yellow means caution. The waves are getting bigger and there may be a small rip current. We recommend adult or lifeguard supervision while swimming. Red means stop. Danger is ahead. The surf is dangerous with strong winds, big waves, and strong rip currents. Do not enter the ocean in red flag conditions unless you are a very strong swimmer, and do not let your kids swim at all. The last two flags are purple and orange. Purple indicates the presence of harmful sea animals, jellyfish, sharks, or other venomous marine life have been spotted close to shore. And orange means there is an environmental hazard in the air or water quality. The conditions are not safe for your health. Make sure to check the weather and water conditions when heading out to the beach. Follow us on Facebook at Corpus Christi Beaches, or visit cctexas.com/ beaches for daily warning flag updates and surf conditions.
Whether you're a homeowner planting a tree or contractor working on a job site, always call 811 at least two days before you dig. It's free, it's easy, and it's the law. Call 811 to provide dig location and project information. A specialist will then come to your location and mark the underground line, allowing you to work safely without any delay. Your safety is our priority. Know what's below, and call 811 before you dig.
Corpus Christi Water is here to demonstrate how to look at your water meter to spot potential water loss from leaky pipes. First, turn off all water fixtures, including faucets, hoses, ice makers, and irrigation systems. Next, locate your water meter. Corpus Christi water meters will always be in the utility easement, which may be in the front of your home or in your backyard. Remove the meter box lid. On the top of the meter, there is a register with numbers. These numbers show how much water is being used. Each meter will also have a flow indicator with a red line or possibly a small red triangle. A flow indicator that is not moving indicates that no water is going through your meter and you do not have a leak. If the flow indicator is moving, water is flowing through your system even though you turned off all fixtures. This means you may have a leak. Look for a leak in or around your home and repair it as soon as possible, or contact a certified plumber for help. If you have any issues with your water or wastewater, please dial 311.
Fostering a pet means that you take care of the pet until they find a forever home and can help ensure that each pet finds an ideal home by matching their personality with a home that best suits them. Adopting a pet is a big decision, and fostering is a great way to learn about owning a pet before making your decision. CCACS provides everything you need to foster an animal. All fosters must be at least 18 years old and submit a foster care application and review the foster care agreement. By taking care of these animals in need, you're creating kennel space at CCACS, allowing us to help more homeless animals. Animals in foster care tend to be less stressed, better socialized, and have a lower chance of getting sick than animals in a shelter. For more information, call 361-826-4606, or email ccacsrescues@ccTexas.com. Corpus Christi Animal Care Services. Caring for our animals, one paw at a time.
I'm Haseel from Corpus Christi Water. Another exceptional drought is affecting major parts of our water sources. In order to conserve water, Corpus Christi Water recommends you to drought-proof your home while we drought-proof our water sources. Saving water means that we have more water for home use, keeping businesses and hospitals running, and fighting fires. So here's a tip: shorten your shower. Visit cctexas.com/ conserve for more information.
The cost of repairing or replacing leaky or old gas lines could be too much for some residents of Corpus Christi. The City of Corpus Christi, in partnership with NextTerra, is here to help you. The Plumbers to People program is dedicated to the safety and well-being of Corpus Christi residents by helping with repairs for their homes. We have partnered with multiple plumbers in the community to repair and replace old leaking gas lines free of charge to the consumer. The purpose of the program is to bring peace of mind to the community and offer support to those in need. To learn more, contact 826-CITY. The Plumbers to People program is here to help you. Before you head out to the beach, make sure you grab your beach permit. For only $12, this permit provides access to explore and enjoy miles of our local beaches. Permits are required, so be sure to display the sticker on your vehicle. All the funds from the permit sales will be used to provide clean and safe beaches for all our visitors to enjoy. The permit is good until December 31st, so come back and visit us as often as you like.
Did you know you can submit a request for city services in just a few minutes using your phone? Download the free MyCC311 app to get started. Quickly report issues such as street maintenance, water or gas issues, garbage pickup, code violations, or animal care services. The MyCC311 app is easy to use. Upload information and photos, identify the location, hit submit, and you're all done. Life made easy with 311. Download the MyCC311 app today. The City of Corpus Christi reminds you there are small, everyday ideas you can use to protect us from drought-related water shortages. Inside your home, install modernized plumbing, low-flow showerheads, and simply turn off the faucet when not in use. Outside your home, make smart landscaping choices, limit your watering, and don't water during the hottest part of the day. Simple choices that will save water for the community and save money on your utility bill. We can all drink to that.
We can all drink to that.
If you find a wandering pet and want to help return them to its owner, there are a few ways you can help. Go to 24petconnect.com to report the missing animal. You can submit photos, detailed information about the animal, and add your contact information. You can also contact the Lost Pet Hotline at 361-882-7387. They're a private group that assists in finding lost pets. Every second matters, so make sure to report a missing pet as soon as possible to help reunite them with their family.
The city of Corpus Christi is proud to introduce a new 311 call center. What is 311? It's an easy-to-remember citizens hotline to report non-emergencies or ask questions about city services. You can report problems and create service requests, check the status of issues, and obtain general information without tying up emergency lines. All you need to do is dial 311, and you will be connected with a trained customer service agent who can help you with all types of issues like reporting potholes in your neighborhood, illegal dumping, graffiti, animal cruelty, and much more. Have a question about your utility bill or need to find out if it's your day for garbage or recycling collection? That's right, 311 will give you that information and much more. There's also a free 311 mobile app available in the App Store and Google Play Store. App users can snap pictures and upload them with complaints and requests, and even track the progress from start to finish. Another way to access 311 is by going to 311.cctexas.com. This option allows you to send in your requests online and has a live chat feature where you can chat instantly with a call center representative to help you with any questions you need answered. The 311 call center is open Monday through Friday from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. The 311 service is part of an ongoing effort by the city of Corpus Christi to make city government easier and more responsive to the needs of residents, business owners, and visitors. Corpus Christi 311, where solutions start with a call. Corpus Christi Water is here to demonstrate how to look at your water meter to spot potential water loss from leaky pipes. First, turn off all water fixtures, including faucets, hoses, ice makers, and irrigation systems. Next, locate your water meter. Corpus Christi water meters will always be in the utility easement, which may be in the front of your home or in your backyard. Remove the meter box lid. On the top of the meter, there is a register with numbers. These numbers show how much water is being used. Each meter will also have a flow indicator with a red line or possibly a small red triangle. A flow indicator that is not moving indicates that no water is going through your meter and you do not have a leak. If the flow indicator is moving, water is flowing through your system even though you turned off all fixtures. This means you may have a leak. Look for a leak in or around your home and repair it as soon as possible, or contact a certified plumber for help. If you have any issues with your water or wastewater, please dial 311.
The villages at McCardle offer 82, 1, 2, and 3-bedroom apartment homes for low-income families. We have a playground, we have a fitness center, we have a food bank where we do food bank distributions. We have a community learning center. We have an area for children with our resident services coordinator.
It has after-school care, which is a really big important portion because we don't want our kids to be not supervised after school and making sure that those children are going to thrive. It's close to transportation, so one of the biggest components of sustainable development is to make sure that those residents are able to transport themselves to better-paying jobs.
There's just such a great need for affordable housing, and the great need coupled with the services that we provide make it a nice partnership and a really quality place to live.
It wasn't until I became a council member that I am seeing how much the city is doing, you know, for its citizens. Having your own home and having this kind of protection is priceless.
If you take a look at the property, you would never think that it's affordable housing. This is just like any other market-rate property that's around the corner.
It wouldn't have been possible without the city's help, without RTA, without HUD. It's vitally important for us all to just get together and celebrate a win.
The city of Corpus Christi's Park and Recreation Department wants to remind the community of our stunning off-street hike-and-bike trail system. With seven trails to choose from, you and the family are sure to have a wonderful time biking while enjoying a tremendous fitness and recreation experience. If you're looking for a scenic route, the Corpus Christi Bay Trail is a great route to explore. It is eight miles long and runs from the Art Museum of South Texas to Texas A&amp;M University Corpus Christi. This trail boasts beautiful bay views along with seven parks on the route, including Coal Park and North Bayfront Park. If an eight-mile trek is too ambitious for you, consider enjoying the fresh coastal breeze in the shadow of the USS Lexington as you stroll down the Corpus Christi Beach Walk on North Beach. For residents looking for a bike trail on the south side of town, the Bear Creek Hike and Bike Trail connects parks, schools, and neighborhoods between Billwitt and Oso Creek Parks. The one-and-a-half-mile path is great for all ages to enjoy. Nearby are the off-road bike trails, which are part of the Oso Creek Park and will eventually connect with the Bear Creek Trail. These bike trails follow the natural terrain as it transitions from South Texas brushland down to the Oso Creek. Another trail to consider is the Shannon Hike and Bike Trail, which runs from Yorktown and Saratoga Boulevard along the Shannon Storm Waterway. It is over a mile-long gravel and concrete trail that connects many parks along its route. The Hans and Pat Suter Wildlife Refuge Trails offers nature lovers an ideal spot to ride along Oso Bay. Along the one-mile trail, you can observe many kinds of birds and other wildlife as you cruise through the grassy marshes and woodlands in the area. If you're looking for a bike trail on the west side part of town, then look no further than Salinas Park. Located on Airport Road and Horn Road, it offers a 93-acre sports complex, complete with a play-for-all playground and splash pad, with a one-mile bike trail wrapping around the entire park. Located in northwest Corpus Christi, the trail at West Guth Park is another great way to enjoy time with the family and get in a great workout. It offers a wide-open park experience with natural environment and wildlife views. Take some bird seeds and you can feed the ducks at the pond. All these trails provide a convenient way to exercise and connect our community to the places where we live, learn, and play. So grab your bike today and make our parks and trails your everyday outdoor gym. For more information on bikes and trails in our city, visit ccTexas.com.
If your pet goes missing, make sure to immediately alert the vet and microchip company. Check online at 24petconnect.com. There you can check the database of found animals, view photos, and submit a lost pet notice. Pet photos and information are updated daily. Go to Corpus Christi Animal Care Services at 2626 Holly Road to see if your pet has been found. Ask your neighbors immediately if they've seen your pet. Your furry friend could be close by. Check social media and see if someone has posted about a missing pet. Run an ad in the local newspaper, or post signs or posters in places like vet clinics, laundromats, groomers, and dog parks. Do not give up. Corpus Christi Animal Care Services is here to help you. Contact us today.
The renovation project consists of the practice facility at the LaZano Golf Center and what used to be the Executive Nine Hole Golf Course. We are thankful that the city of Corpus Christi has embraced this project and recognizes the value of golf to its citizens and tourists, and we're just so excited about a complete redo of the golf course and the practice facility. Up until this project, it was literally a flat piece of ground with nine little bitty push-up greens. The only thing that was irrigated were a couple of sprinkler heads. We've selected premium turf grasses for the golf course. We're going to use Platinum TE Seashore Passphalam on the greens, and we're going to use Celebration Bermuda Grass for tees, fairways, and rough. We're moving approximately 80,000 cubic yards of earth on just a nine-hole project, and the second part of the project is both the practice facility and the Firefly Golf Course are going to be lit at night. We're lighting 41 acres so that hours can be extended concerning the practice facility. Our present facility has 35 hitting stations, which as part of this project, we're going to expand to 50 hitting stations. Our range floor is now going to have target greens that are going to be shaped in similar to the greens on the golf course and the greens on the Firefly Golf Course, so that it'll be a real practice experience. We're going to have two chipping greens with chipping fairways, and we'll also have two bunkers so people can work on their sand game. We're working our way through the golf course, and we're about to complete the third hole, shaping from tee to green. Then we plant the grass, and our target is to have all of the facilities planted by the end of May, once they reopen. We're targeting the first of September. We think that it will be another entertainment venue opportunity for the people that are here visiting. We just hope to add to the great package that Corpus Christi has for great things to do.
The city of Corpus Christi is proud to introduce a new 311 call center. What is 311? It's an easy-to-remember citizens hotline to report non-emergencies or ask questions about city services. You can report problems and create service requests, check the status of issues, and obtain general information without tying up emergency lines. All you need to do is dial 311, and you will be connected with a trained customer service agent who can help you with all types of issues like reporting potholes in your neighborhood, illegal dumping, graffiti, animal cruelty, and much more. Have a question about your utility bill or need to find out if it's your day for garbage or recycling collection? That's right, 311 will give you that information and much more. There's also a free 311 mobile app available in the App Store and Google Play Store. App users can snap pictures and upload them with complaints and requests, and even track the progress from start to finish. Another way to access 311 is by going to 311.cctexas.com. This option allows you to send in your requests online and has a live chat feature where you can chat instantly with a call center representative to help you with any questions you need answered. The 311 call center is open Monday through Friday from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. The 311 service is part of an ongoing effort by the city of Corpus Christi to make city government easier and more responsive to the needs of residents, business owners, and visitors. Corpus Christi 311, where solutions start with a call.
We are having what's called a xeriscate workday. We've got lots of volunteers here. We've got xeriscate committee members. We've got master gardeners that are here. The word xeriscate comes from the xeric word, which means low water. The idea behind a xeriscate garden is that you can put in things that work really well that do not require huge amounts of water.
We are in an environmentally sensitive area where it pertains to water. It's always on our minds. We don't get as much water as, say, East Texas. We are drought-prone, and so we need to learn how to better utilize the rainfall that happens. This is a learning garden for people to come down and learn how to use the low amount of water that we naturally get here in the coastal bend to achieve a great color, a great environment on the outside of their homes, and also achieving the ability to lower their costs and water usage.
All of the plants that we have today are all very well-adapted for our climate. Some are natives, others are not, but they all are very suited to this climate. All these plants meet the guidelines for stage-one water restrictions. You can put in a xeriscate garden like this and meet those guidelines easily.
Corpus Christi Water is a proud sponsor of the xeriscate garden. It's a great place to find those aesthetic outside, beautiful plants and varieties of grasses that have deep root systems that can save time and water.
There's 18,000 square feet of plants that you can enjoy down here. It's open year-round to the public and easy access, so if you're interested in coming down, it's at 1900 North Chaparral Street.
Watch our social media for upcoming xeriscate garden workdays.
The city of Corpus Christi reminds you there are small, everyday ideas.
The City of Corpus Christi reminds you, there are small, everyday ideas you can use to protect us from drought-related water shortages. Inside your home, install modernized plumbing, low-flow showerheads, and simply turn off the faucet when not in use. Outside your home, make smart landscaping choices, limit your watering, and don't water during the hottest part of the day. Simple choices that will save water for the community and save money on your utility bill. We can all drink to that.
A major issue at recycling facilities today is when plastic shopping bags are incorrectly added to the recycling bin. Plastic bags are accepted at many retail or grocery store recycling drop-off bins, but these items are not accepted in your local recycling program. When recycling plastic bags and overwrap at these retail drop-off locations, it is important to remove any receipts or stickers from the plastic and make sure it is clean and dry. The types of soft plastic accepted at these drop-off locations include thin plastic shopping bags, zip-top storage bags, bubble wrap, plastic mailers, and plastic overwrap packaging. The key to becoming a better recycler is to sort your waste correctly so you can recycle more. This helps reduce your waste in landfills and has a positive impact on the environment. Thank you for recycling.
It is important to shut off your property's water flow if your pipes are frozen or losing water. First, locate your water meter box. Sometimes it is in the back of the property or close to the street. Once you locate your water meter box, carefully remove the lid because there is a wire connected to the transmission unit that is connected to the register. Do not disconnect this wire. You may have to remove debris or leaves from the valve and the register. Locate the water main shut-off valve. The valve will be pointing towards the property when you open the meter box. Using a crescent wrench or a tool, turn the valve 90 degrees to the right, and the valve will be pointing left to right when you are finished. Do not use pliers to turn the valve. Next, go inside your property and check the faucets. Make sure no water is flowing. If water is still flowing, the valve needs to be turned to the right to completely shut off water flow. For more information, visit the city's website at www.cctexas.com/waterboil or call 361-826-CITY. That's 826-2489.
A major issue at recycling facilities today is when plastic shopping bags are incorrectly added to the recycling bin. Plastic bags are accepted at many retail or grocery store recycling drop-off bins, but these items are not accepted in your local recycling program. When recycling plastic bags and overwrap at these retail drop-off locations, it is important to remove any receipts or stickers from the plastic and make sure it is clean and dry. The types of soft plastic accepted at these drop-off locations include thin plastic shopping bags, zip-top storage bags, bubble wrap, plastic mailers, and plastic overwrap packaging. The key to becoming a better recycler is to sort your waste correctly so you can recycle more. This helps reduce your waste in landfills and has a positive impact on the environment. Thank you for recycling.
You can submit a city service request quickly and easily by downloading the MyCC 3-1-1 app on your phone. Reporting street problems, tall grass, gas or water issues, or other concerns is simple on the 3-1-1 app. Just choose from a list of services, add a photo, answer a few short questions, mark your location, and hit submit. Everything you need in just a few minutes. Life is made easy with 3-1-1. Download the MyCC 3-1-1 app today.
Lace up your shoes and air up your tires for the Safe, Fun, Fit Endurance Fest. This three-day event takes place on June 2nd, 3rd, and 4th at the Waters Edge Park downtown. Light up the night during the 5K Glow Run on Friday, June 2nd at 6:30 p.m. Test your endurance in the 10K Half Marathon and Relay on Saturday, June 3rd, starting at 7:00 a.m. And ride out the weekend with the On the Edge Bike Tour, Sunday, June 4th at 7:30 a.m. Sign up today at vfitproductions.com. Stay active, stay healthy, stay fit at Safe, Fun, Fit Endurance Fest.
We've all dealt with the hassles of traveling. Traffic, long lines, security, layoffs. What if there was a smarter way? When you fly out of Corpus Christi International Airport, you get all the modern amenities you love with the stress-free convenience of flying global. So you can skip the hassle and get right to the good parts, taking off and returning home. Fly smarter, not harder, at flyccia.com.
Life is made easy with 3-1-1, a fast and reliable way to report a problem and get information on city services. Everything from street repairs, gas or water leaks, animal care services, or even information on your trash pickup schedule. Call 3-1-1 or download the MyCC 3-1-1 app and get instant access to create service requests, upload information and photos, and submit your location to alert us to the area. 3-1-1 provides solutions to everyday problems, anytime, anywhere, on any device. Get better quality, better service, and better results. Life made easy with 3-1-1. Download MyCC.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and reconvene our meeting. We are Section I, which is the Consent Agenda, Items 5 through 20. So gentlemen and ladies, is there any item between 5 and 20 that anyone would like to pull for individual consideration?
Mayor, can I have you pull Items 17 and 19?
Item number 17 and 19.
Thank you.
Any other items, Councilman? Okay, I'll go ahead and entertain-
Actually, Mayor, just for some levity, and I know Mr. Weber had mentioned it, was number 18.
You're pulling item number 18?
Pulling number 18.
Okay. I'm going to go ahead and entertain a motion to approve Consent Agenda with the exception of Item Number 17, 18, and 19.
So moved.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The motion carries. So the first item pulled was Item Number 17, and that is a resolution authorizing a three-year service agreement with two one-year options with Two Chains Brush Clearing LLC. This is for mowing of stormwater and street right-of-way areas for the Public Works Department. And who pulled this? Okay, Councilman Klein, your question.
Yeah, thanks, Ernie. I just wanted to ask you about this. I'm very much in favor of this, but I'm wondering if down the road, it might be a wiser use of our funds to maybe expand our in-house staff for doing this kind of work. I don't know what the cost differential is for doing it in-house as opposed to contracting it out. My suspicions are that it's going to be greater to be contracted out, but I don't know that. And of course, there's the trade-off of having to buy all the additional equipment and that sort of thing as well.
Right, right. Gabriel, you want to get in the plan? We have a plan for exactly doing exactly that.
Gabriel, I'm also Assistant Director of Public Works. So vegetation maintenance is actually under the Stormwater Fund. So to start increasing those activities, you would also increase the stormwater fee associated with it to cover those expenses. So it's balancing those stormwater fee increases with those budget improvements or, you know, contracting it, you know, out of our office. So we can look at that, and we can get you some prices on what it would take, but also keep in mind there would be an increase in stormwater fee to cover those expenses also.
Right, but I'm wondering though, is handling this in-house would actually be cheaper than contracting it out?
Yeah, most of the time it is. It's getting the equipment, like you said, getting the personnel on place, but yes, we can take a look at that.
All right, great, thank you. Unless there's other comments, I would move approval.
If you're ready, wait a second. Okay, we have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The motion carries. Item Number 19 was pulled, and that is a motion authorizing the purchase of a modular building from Sustainable Modular Management at Frisco, Texas. And this is administrative space to be occupied by engineering services staff. And who pulled this one? Councilman, her name is-
18.
18, yes.
Yeah.
Your question, Councilman.
No, she was described 18, not 19. You know, I looked at this and I thought, you know, when I did the math, it's $138 a square foot, which is a little high for a modular building. But looking at the bids, there were only two bids. You know, I didn't see any from GE Capital or some of the other companies that do that. I guess this is something, could this have been more widely circulated? Because there's a lot of companies that do this.
Josh Crowley for Assistant Director of Finance and Procurement. You know, we did our best. We reached out to about two or three other companies that specialize in this. I think there were some unique requirements in the specifications. Didn't we need a certain... When Jeff was talking about this, we needed a very specific style. So it had something to do with being able to allow for conduit for the servers?
Yeah, so the facility itself, I don't necessarily want to say was extremely unique, but we were trying to acquire facilities that matched our current facilities, because we're currently in modular trailer facilities, so this is kind of an expansion of it. So the specifications that were used were the same specs that were used for the original installation. So with some minor tweaks, obviously, to bring it into more current standards, because our facility is pretty old. But those are the guidelines that we put out.
No, actually, I think this is a good idea. I mean, if you're going to use some of this kind of aspect, you know, to have modular buildings that you can, and then they can be moved if you need them somewhere else. I know we were looking at some construction projects for building at our wastewater facilities. I think there was two of them that were pulled at one point. This might be a consideration for that if you're looking at it, because it would save you a lot of money and it'd take a lot of time in construction. This might be something we can look for further in the future. I think this is an ideal situation, and I hadn't thought about this before, but I mean, considering some of the costs associated with this and the amount of time it would take to put it in place, maybe be something we can consider more in the future. But I like the idea, and I want to kind of highlight that in terms of what cost-wise, and maybe you don't need that specific specification for the other, you know, other use, but I would encourage you to look more into that. Maybe some of other departments could look into it. With that, I make a motion to approve.
Okay, any further discussion? Mr. Klein?
Yeah, so I just want to kind of come back to some of the public comments that were made earlier regarding the option of using existing, available, empty, unused office space instead of modular offices here instead. Can you just kind of speak to that? I mean, was that considered at all? Is it impractical for a particular reason or other reasons?
So we're actually, my team, by the way, Brettman Hazel, Assistant Director of Engineering Services, my team is actually located on Holly Road between Everhart and Staples. So we're not actually located near City Hall, as the resident mentioned. So we don't have any local space available where we could have put additional personnel. And in addition, not having the team co-located isn't very efficient and beneficial to my team. We have everyone located in one spot so that we're able to do our job better. So for us, there is no space that we could have utilized to provide this service. So we're actually expanding into the area that we have there. We're actually moving some fence, clearing some land to actually put this space. So we're trying to utilize what's there now on city property to accommodate my staff.
All right, thank you.
Can I just add, because in a couple of weeks, we'll be coming back with those two facilities at our wastewater treatment plant. So it's a very different environment in terms of the chemicals that are used in those wastewater treatment plants. So the air is corrosive, if you will. And then secondly, and we'll talk more about it when we bring those forward, the wastewater facilities do have shower rooms and other rooms that are necessary for the employees that work in those harsh conditions as well. I suspect you could find a modular building with, you know, a restroom in there or a shower room, but-
They're basically double wides or trailers. They all have showers and-
But again, as Councilman Klein and we have talked about, workplace environments are equally important as is pay to retaining and attracting employees. And so this works for Brett, because these inspectors are out in the field mostly, whereas at the wastewater treatment plants, they're onsite using computerized, you know, systems, managing the plants, and then using shower rooms and other rooms.
Well, have you seen these modular buildings? They're pretty nice nowadays.
Seen them for 26 years, yes, sir.
Yeah, so I mean, they're not, I mean, it's not, we're not talking, you know, like a trailer with an aluminum roof on it.
I know what they are. I've been working 26 years in the government, but again, having workspace that is modern and people, it's, there's a stigma with modular, modular buildings, Brett can tell you.
Sorry, Brett. You guys are stigmatized now. I don't think it's a bad deal. I mean, it's, you know, it's not, you know, to, you know, if you're talking about cost savings for a facility that meets the need- about cost savings for a facility that meets the needs of what's required, if you're gonna do testing or-
Right.
-chemical testing or whatever, you know, I'm not sure if it's a corrosive environment, I'm not really sure that's, you know, environmentally safe, is that what you're trying to say? It's a-
It's, uh, because of the chemicals, I don't think Daniel Deng was there, but the chemicals that are used, obviously, to treat that, uh, you know, the wastewater, uh, that goes into any one of our six wastewater treatment plants, um, it does have some corrosive activity and there's, there's, uh, you know-
Well, I mean, this is not this particular item.
No, this one's fine.
Not this one.
Right.
What I'm saying is that I, I like what they're doing.
Right.
You know, they're, they're looking at trying to have a facility with a real short amount of time and, uh, the least amount of money, and I think they're making some good financial decisions over at the engineering department with this respect to this.
Right.
I think other departments should look at it as well, instead of, you know, um, you know, because it costs us a lot of money to build stuff. And even at this, it's a little higher than what I expected too, but it's a lot less than what you're talking about.
Right, for this application, Councilman, I agree, this is a, because the inspectors rarely aren't using the facility much, they're out in the field inspecting projects. Uh, but we can, when we bring that item back, we'll get you lifespan, so these things don't last fifty years. The buildings that we build-
If you bought three of them, it would still be less than what you're talking about building.
We'll, we'll show that to you, Councilman, yeah, when we come back in a couple of weeks.
Okay, um, Councilman Pusley.
Okay, is this gonna be on slab or piers?
Uh, this will not be on a slab, this will be on, I guess you can call it piers, it'll be-
Okay. Gonna be ADA compliant?
Right, so we'll have, uh, we'll have access, we have ADA compliant access now, we're actually gonna interconnect the two facilities, so we have ADA ramp in place already.
Okay, all right.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I, I, I think it's a good idea also, and, and when I first read it, I would've bet Gil would be dead set against this, but I'm, I was wrong. But, uh, anyway, I, I, I think it's a good idea, the only thing I'd say, I, I think I would've been happier to have seen, uh, more competitive bidding on this. There's a number of companies out there that do these general shelters and, you know, I had, I, I have two of these that I built, uh, and, or had built, and, um, there's a lot of competitive pricing out there for this kind of structure, so I was a little disappointed to only see two, but, okay.
Okay, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion. Do we have a motion in a second, sorry? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no. The motion carries. Item number nineteen is a resolution approving the addition of Estrada Inahosa and Cabrera Capital Markets LLC to the city's pool of financial underwriters to be used as, on and as needed rotational basis for issuance of bonds. Yeah, Councilman Hernandez? Or, I'm sorry, Klein, your question, sir?
Yeah, I, I have their, uh, thank you, uh, I just had a quick question about this. Uh, we're adding to the kind of the pool of, um, underwriters, uh, for issuance of bond insurance. Um, I wonder how from amongst the pool, it looked fairly large, and we're gonna expand it some more, now how, from amongst that pool of potential underwriters, how do we go about choosing which one for a particular project?
Sure, Heather Hurlbert, Interim Assistant City Manager. The, um, what we do is that we do kind of a rotational, it depends on, um, the type of bonds we're issuing, whether they're revenue bonds, GOs or COs. Um, and then we go through and look to see, have they been bringing ideas to us, have they been keeping up with us, um, you know, communicating with us on what we may have available for refundings, things along those lines. Um, and then we work directly with our financial advisor too, to say, okay, certain firms are better maybe on the revenue bond side or on the GO bond side, um, and then we try to rotate through those ones that are, um, you know, that, that, that we do communicate with on a regular basis. Um, also depending on the size of the issuance, depends on how many underwriters you will need for that syndicate, um, and whether or not they would be a senior manager or co-manager on those, there's a bunch of different factors that go into that.
Okay, thanks, uh, and, um, uh, I'm guessing, uh, you have not got any complaints about the way that that selection process works out?
No, no complaints. Um, if anything, a desire to be included more often, maybe, just because, um, you know, that is their business they're in, but no, we've not received any complaints that we haven't included somebody or not given somebody the opportunity, no.
Great, thank you, that's all I had.
Sure.
Additional questions, I would move approval.
Second.
Okay, any, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no. The motion carries. We have Wendy on the phone, Rebecca, or do you have Wendy on the phone? She's ready to give a briefing, a legislative briefing.
Hello, everyone, can you hear me out there?
Yes.
Excellent. Okay, well, I ran over here to our focus advocacy office, uh, we have five days left, and it's, uh, it's really getting into the silly season up here. Um, let me start off with a really, uh, great accomplish, accomplishment by, uh, Team Corpus Christi. Last week, SB eleven seventeen, um, I thought it was a languishing bill, and I assumed that it was dead, but you should never assume anything's dead in legislative sessions. Um, so it started to show signs of life late in the, uh, late last week. I, on Saturday, I got a, uh, email or a text from Snapper asking me to find out some financial information. Uh, this is a bill that would prohibit cities from collecting franchise fees from cable companies. Um, and we collect fees from them, uh, right-of-way fees, that's where they run their cables, and we collect right-of-way fees from them, and it helps to maintain those right-aways. And so, um, I asked Constance Sanchez on Saturday to get me some financial information to find out exactly how much money that that could potentially cost the city of Corpus Christi, and fortunately, Constance also works Saturdays, and she was able to get that information to me. Yesterday, I crafted a letter, uh, that the mayor and city manager signed for us with that information in there about how we could potentially lose four point two million dollars. And that's just what Corpus Christi could lose, this bill would affect, um, every city statewide. So we were, um, one of the, in fact, we were the only city that came forth with hard numbers of what this could do to cities, and it certainly stopped a lot of members in their tracks. Um, Snapper and I went around and not only spoke with our delegation, but we literally grabbed every representative we could lay hands on and made sure that they saw this bill, probably talked to thirty or forty of them yesterday evening, and we managed to kill this bill, uh, yesterday evening. So that was a great success for Team Corpus Christi, and, and I'm really proud of the work that we did on that. So, moving forward on a few of the bills that we're watching, I want you guys to keep in mind that, um, the deadlines, today's deadline, all Senate bills that are over in the House for consideration have to be out of the House by, uh, midnight tonight. Uh, tomorrow, all of our HB bills, House bills that are over in the Senate for consideration, uh, have to be voted out, or on their second reading, anyway. Um, however, the Senate's pretty famous for suspending their rules, so that, that could get extended. The House deadline of tonight probably won't get, um, won't get extended. So that means that the bill that we have been, um, uh, following with our, um, Convention Center bill, which is HB, uh, five oh one two, that got sent over to the Senate, it was eligible to be heard yesterday, they did not get to it yesterday, they are moving slower than molasses today, but they are, um, working, they have already extended their deadline to work until at least ten PM tonight, that could be extended later as well, um, but they have not gotten to it yet today. Um, there's about, I've got a list of about a hundred bills that they could consider today, they're not going in any particular order, they're just selecting them randomly, and they've done probably about twenty-five, twenty-six bills so far today. So they're moving really slow, but we have great hopes that we can get that, um, Convention Center bill through, the financing bill through, and, um, it'll move over to the House next. Because Houston got added to it, it's considered an amended bill, so the House has to approve it, and, um, once that happens, then it'll go to the governor's, uh, desk to be signed, and then we'll be able to start funding our, the improvements to our Convention Center. Another bill that we've been watching is SB three six nine, this is one that I've updated you on every week, it's the auto, uh, disannexation bill. Um, it was reported, uh, reported out of the House Committee, it's been placed on the calendar for today, it has to get out today, if it doesn't, then it's dead, so we're hoping that one, that one dies as well. Um, let's see, let's go over a few dead bills. There's quite a few of them, um, while this started out as a really anti-city session, um, it's, and, and there've been some stinkers that have passed, there's, uh, actually some, uh, some good news on that front, a lot of the land bills died yesterday. Uh, HB twenty eighteen, which, uh, created the thirty-day shot clock for land developers, that one died. Um, SB twenty thirty-seven, which prohibited cities from applying subdivision regulations into ETJ, that one died. Um, the lobbyist bill, I know that you guys have been interested in that one, SB one seventy-five and its companion, both of those are dead. Um, all the gambling bills are dead. Um, HB eleven thirty-two, which increases the threshold for competitive bidding for municipalities from fifty to a hundred thousand, that one died, and all of the beach bills are dead. So that's the good news on that, we're still watching a few more of them. Um, um, HB five, which is Chairman Hunter's, uh, Economic Development, uh, bill, that one got voted out of the Senate Committee, um, and it, as I checked just about an hour and a half ago, um, it's still not on calendars, but it's got a little bit of time, so we're very hopeful for that bill. So that's my report for right now. Oh, one more thing, um, Snapper Carr, our lobbyist, is going to be coming to Corpus Christi to give a wrap-up report to council on June the twenty-seventh, that will be after the veto date, so we'll be able to give a really accurate report of all the bills that passed and how they're going to affect you.
Oh, good.
So I stand ready for any questions, if you have any.
Good, that was gonna be my question, Wendy, so thank you for answering it. Uh, the analysis of, of how they would affect us. Uh, Councilman Pusley?
Yeah, Wendy, can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, what, and I'm sorry, the first bill you mentioned that got killed, which, which one was that? Which bill number?
That was SB eleven seventeen. Um, like I said, that was kind of a sneaky little bill, I kind of thought it was dead, it languished over in the House Committee for a long time, and, uh, then it started moving really quickly, and it was a bill that would, uh, it, it's a streaming bill, so it would, uh, they were trying to exempt Netflix and Hulu and all of the streaming services from our, um, the right-of-way, or from the franchise fees, and so we managed to get that one, that one washed.
Okay, what about the annexing bill? Uh, where is that at? Where, if we don't-
Which one, uh?
I can't remember the bill number, but it's where if, if the city, the, all the areas in the ETJ, uh-
Oh, SB twenty thirty-seven?
Yeah.
Yes, that bill would have prohibited city from applying the rules that we apply whenever you have subdivisions, whenever they build out subdivisions, uh, it would have prohibited them from doing that in the ETJ. And that bill died.
Now, the one I'm referring to is if, if the properties within the ETJ and we, and the city has not brought the utilities to them-
The automatic disannexation bill?
Oh, man, I'm having a hard time hearing her.
That one, the one that will automatically, uh, um, be re-annexed or disannexed by the end of the year?
Yes, yes.
Okay, that's SB three sixty-nine, it's still alive, but if it doesn't get voted out of the House today, then it's dead.
It's dead.
Today's this House's deadline.
Yeah, 'cause over the weekend, it seemed like it had legs, so I was a little concerned. That would cost a ton of money, too.
Well, you know, the only thing, I, I think that we can be grateful that it's really crowded over there, like I said, all of them have lists of bills to get to, and-
Yeah.
I, I, I don't know, I, I, I don't know that they'll get to it, so-
It's gotta be really important before it's gonna go anywhere.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, that is an important one.
That's all I have, thank you, Wendy.
Okay, I think that's it, Wendy, thank you so much. So we'll, um, anxiously await tomorrow night at midnight, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so that'll take us over to section M, individual, uh, consideration items twenty-one through twenty-nine. Item number twenty-one is a one-reading ordinance for urgent mechanical improvements at the arena and for capital improvements and enhancement of the arena, for urgent mechanical improvements at the Selena Auditorium, and for capital improvements and enhancement to the Convention Center and Selena Auditorium. Elsie.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and Council, Elsie Borksted, Assistant Director of Aviation. So the, um, this item is for FY twenty-three budget appropriation, transferring of funds and amending the operating and capital budget for urgent mechanical improvements to the American Bank Center, Convention Center, and Selena Auditorium. As we talk about the project location, it will, um, involve several items throughout the complex, so-
Elsie, I want, Mayor, I wanna make a motion to approve this, I mean, we've all been over there and seen this, I'm not sure we need a lot of discussion about it.
We can do that, let, let me open public comment, you, you made your motion, though, so I'm gonna go ahead and open public comment. Is the, uh, is there anyone in the audience that would like to make comment on item number twenty-one? Okay, there being no one, we'll close public comment, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Uh, Councilman Klein?
Yeah, just very quickly, um, I was looking at the, the images you got here in the presentation, uh, and I did see some of this, but, uh, this is something, an area where we might be able to really kind of, um, improve upon, and that is adopting zero-scape practices at the American Bank Center, uh, not only to help, uh, avoid additional watering, but also to kind of serve as a model then for the public as they're going to the facility to understand what and how this can be done, uh, their own residences or businesses for that matter as well.
Thank you for the question, excellent point. Um, as a matter of fact, we are under about ninety percent design right now, and, uh, some of the elements that will be included as part of that design is zero-scaping, um, vegetation that is compatible with our zone, um, for, uh, this region, and then also, uh, trying to incorporate elements that would, um, align more with our water restrictions.
Right, great, thank you.
Yes, sir.
That's all I have.
Okay, great, do we have a second on the item?
Yeah.
Oh, we have a second. You, okay, Dan Sagin. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no. The motion carries. Item number twenty-two is a motion approving, authorizing the approval of change order number three with pay limited, uh, for overlays as part of the street preventative maintenance program and consistent with the council-approved pavement-only approach located citywide.
Move to approve.
Move to approve.
Check it.
We have a move to approve in a second, is there anyone in the audience that would like to make public comment on, uh, item number twenty-two, which is the new approach to streets? Okay, there being no one, we'll close public comment. Uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no. The motion carries. Thank you, uh, Mr. Delgarza. Now say thank you. Yeah. Item number twenty-three is a motion awarding a construction contract to Bridges Specialties Incorporated for stormwater infrastructure indefinite delivery indefinite quantity fiscal year twenty-three through twenty-five program, which includes bridge rehabilitation, channel ditch improvements, and citywide stormwater infrastructure rehabilitation. I'm waiting, is there gonna be one?
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Is there, okay, we'll get there. Is, uh, is there anyone in the audience that would like to make public comment on item number twenty-three? Okay, there being no one, uh, Councilman, well, closed public comment, Councilman Hernandez.
Yeah, Rottner, there, there is no list of what projects were included in this, and I think, what, this is over two years?
This is three years.
Three years? Okay, there's no list of, uh, of projects and what you're gonna be doing here, so do you have, I mean, um, can you provide something with that?
Yes, sir, Gabriel Nolos, Assistant Director of Public Works. Uh, so yes, we do have some, uh, projects that are in the pipeline, uh, one of the big ones, of course, is our Bridge Improvements IMP, uh, so we have in-kind work associated with the Ocean Drive and Yorktown Bridge, uh, so that's gonna be, I'd be, think, a little over, about one and a half million over those three years that we'll be using this IMP for. Uh, we have phase one of Williams Ditch between Ennis Jocelyn and SPID. Uh, we have, uh, one of our, uh, usual suspects is Tanglewood on Staples and Holly, uh, we wanna do some improvements there. Um, there's one at Caldwell and Savage that we've been looking at also, there's something in the northwest, uh, behind Cal Island that we have issues, but, yes, sir, we have a, a list of projects that, uh, that we have that we wanna tackle with this IMP.
Okay, for future reference, when you have something like this, please include the projects that are this is gonna be applying to, uh, that way we can at least have some idea of where this money's gonna be spent, 'cause, uh, the way it's sit here, I have no clue where it's gonna go.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah? Okay, uh, all in favor say aye. We did. Didn't we? Yeah, yeah. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The motion carries. Item number 24 is a resolution awarding a construction contract to MAKO Contracting for reconstruction of Leipz Boulevard from Staple Street to Sunwood Drive.
I do have some questions on it, though. This is one of the ones that have taken a little bit longer than, you know, this was, what is it, 2020?
Yes, sir. It is a 2020 bond project.
Okay, so, you know, I know my sometimes friend, sometimes, not so much friend, Councilman Barretta had some issues with Carol Lane, which was around the same time, where it was kind of the issue of these things not moving as quick as they could be. Can you kind of give us, what was the delay?
Ratna Patapunto, Assistant Director of Project Management Engineering Services. One of the reasons that delayed this project is the storm drainage improvements. We have huge 66-inch pipes under the Leipz Boulevard, so we had to go back and forth and do some hydraulic analysis to make sure we are making sure that the drainage improvements are being done. So I don't know if you know the Crestwood neighborhood, there's a Crestwood Street and there's a senior center over there. So the Crestwood and the senior center were having some drainage issues.
You mean the senior living?
Senior living center, yes. So we have to do extensive drainage study to make sure we cover all those drainage improvements. So that's the reason.
I think it's called Solstice is the one on the northern side of Leipz. And that one has, they have some, I guess, detention areas that are around the structures. Is that what you're referring to?
Yes, sir. Yes.
And that caused the delays in the, in the design of the street?
There was a lot of back and forth on the drainage, so we were trying to control the cost of this project. If you saw, there was around 4.5 million worth of drainage improvements purported with this project, so we were trying to minimize the cost, so we had to do extensive drainage study to see, okay, how can we reduce the cost? And during that process, the project got delayed a little bit, but sometimes, you know, it just takes time.
Is there an outfall from the street into those, into those detention areas that are near Solstice?
There is, the pipes are undersized over there, so what happens is you have this drainage ditch, you have this backflows over there into those, the streets and all, so we have to upsize the, the pipes in the Leipz roadway. And also there's a lot of drainage development going on Staples and around that area, so you have to accommodate all that runoff, too. So we have an existing 66-inch pipe on the Leipz, so we are proposing to add another 66-inch pipe on there. So we have to do severe research on that, make sure the existing 66-inch pipe was in good condition, and then do all the studies for that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Motion to approve.
We have Councilman Roy.
Gil, I think you know that that's right by my office, right? So I'm glad that this is getting done, because I've been looking for the council member that's responsible for that for a while.
You realize it's across the street from where your office is at. It's not on the same side.
Now, we have a motion. Did we have a second? We do, we have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The motion carries. Who seconded? I'm sorry, go ahead. Councilman Roy. Thank you. Can you turn your light off? Okay, item number 25 is an ordinance authorizing the issuance of its utility system senior lien revenue improvement and/or refunding bonds in one or more series for water, wastewater, and stormwater utility improvements in an amount not to exceed $114 million in refinancing, in an amount not to exceed $186,645,000.
Good afternoon. I will give you a presentation, and this will cover items number 25, 26, 27, 28, and 29. And so these are issuance, these are all delegation ordinances for the issuance of the bonds to fund our CIP program for fiscal year '23. And so just kind of walk through the process. You know, city council does approve a CIP program with the capital budget, and then the budgets are appropriated, and then we bring reimbursement resolutions to city council so that we can start spending those monies before we actually issue the bonds. Then as we move towards issuing the bonds, our capital staff, along with myself, works through and looks to see what our funding needs are for the next 12 to 18 months, and then we determine how much debt needs to be issued to fund those projects. A lot of times, even though what we adopt in the CIP is not what we issue, because a lot of times those projects will have to go through design and engineering, and then we will not issue the debt until we actually moved into the construction timeframe. We did bring a notice of intention to council back in April to notice to the public that we will be issuing the certificates of obligations, and that was approved by city council and was published in the newspaper as required. So today, what we're bringing forward is the first reading of an ordinance delegating the authority to certain city staff to approve the sale of revenue bonds, certificates of obligations, general obligation bonds, and tax notes within stated parameters. So when we look to see, within each of these ordinances, there are delegation parameters, and so the city council is delegating the authority to sign off on the, on the documents as long as they are within those parameters. And so for each series, there's a different parameter. The parameters detail out what the maximum principal that can be issued, what the maximum true interest rate cost is, what the maximum maturity is, and then on the revenue bonds, which also include a portion for refunding and what is called tendering, we have to achieve a maximum savings before we can move forward with those transactions. So looking at the steps for issuance, today we'll have the first reading of the ordinance authorizing the delegation of authority. On June 13th, we'll have the second reading of the ordinance to delegate the authority, and then we'll move to market with these different issuances. Most likely, they'll go at different times. A lot of times we'll bring the CO and the GEO credit at one point in time, and then the revenue credit at another time, within usually a week or so of each other, depending on the market. And then we propose that all of these will close on all the financing in August. And then just a reminder of what we, what these issuances are for. So looking at the general obligation overviews, we are issuing $35.75 million, which is the remaining authorization from the 2020 bond election. We issued a portion of these bonds last year, and this is the remaining of the authorization. We have $6.3 million, there should be an extra zero in there, for our certificates of obligations, which are tax exempt. These will be supported through our interest and sinking fund or taxpayer, taxpayer supported. We have $8.7 million, which will be issued as certificates of obligations, but these will be taxable, and these are for the solid waste projects, along with the project at the golf course. And then we have $3.5 million, which will be limited tax notes. And what those are is that we did have a 2018 bond project that was just due to the time and the cost of the project, there was a funding gap. That was brought forward to council, I believe it was brought forward in November, explaining that we needed the additional $3.5 million, and so we're issuing the tax notes to fund that gap. And to the right, you can see the different Parks and Recs, Public Safety, Solid Waste, and Streets for the funding. Then moving into the utility system bonds, we are proposing to issue 300 million. Now, that is a lot more than what we're, but not all of that is new money. 114 million of that will be new money to issue new projects that were included in the CIP, and then $186 million is included for refunding and tendering obligations. These would be done for savings, and so we would not move forward unless we realize the savings that are included in the delegation. And so looking through the projects, we have a combination of water, wastewater, stormwater, and gas projects totaling the 114 million. So that does conclude my presentation. I'm available for any questions.
Motion to approve. 26, 27, 28.
Turn your.
Yep, 25, 26, 27, 28, and 29.
I want to make a motion to approve items number 25, 26, 27, and 28.
And 29.
And 29.
Okay. We have, Councilman Hernandez has a question, and Councilman Klein.
Yes, Mayor, 27 and 28 are the certificates of obligation that I have not been in favor of utilizing that instrument, so I will be voting no on 27 and 28. So I don't know if that has to be a separate motion, or maybe we can get a?
We can do separate votes. That would be cleaner, just so we can know. So you said 20, which ones?
27 and 28.
Okay, so 27 and 28.
Okay, you made a motion to approve all of them. I will be voting no on 27 and 28 as an, as I'm not, I don't approve of that instrument in a non-emergency basis, so I will, I'm voting no on those.
So we'll basically take them one at a time. Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and, well, actually, Councilman. You could do 25, 26, and 29. We'll change it, but I'm going to go ahead and let them. You're going to do it one at a time? No, no, we're going to continue to have comment, and then we'll come back to that. Councilman Klein.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Heather, I'm looking at item number 29. I probably misreading this, but just clarify this for me, if you would, please. It looks to me like that this is going to authorize an ad valorem tax in addition to existing taxes. Tell me that I may correct.
You are incorrect. So that will be, it is included in our current tax rate or will be included in future tax rate, so it's not an additional tax. It'll use whatever the ad valorem tax rate is, whatever it's set at. So when we set the tax rate, you have two sides to the tax rate. One is the INS side and one is the MNO side, so for interest and sinking or your debt service and your MNO, which is your maintenance and operation. So the debt service for this will be included on the INS side, included in the total tax rate. There will not be an additional tax rate that'll need to be issued.
Great, thank you.
Sure.
Councilman Roy.
So my question is, essentially, we're voting today, then we have to, again, this, and what's the, give me the July and the August.
Sure, sure. By using these delegation ordinances, you are delegating the authority to certain city staff, the city manager, director of finance, and the CFO to authorize all of the sale documents. So we will not have to come back to council to say, do you approve the sale or not? That's why we have those delegation parameters. The sales have to meet those, fall within those parameters. Yes.
So my question, and you're leading right into my question, is at what point in time are we actually locked in?
At the actual point of sale in June timeframe, yes.
In the June timeframe?
Yeah, and then it takes several, it takes a period of time then for those to close and fund. So we go, we go to market. We will either do a competitive sale or a negotiated sale. We'll sell the bonds, and then we have to go through the process of actually close, settling the sale. It takes several weeks. We work through our underwriters to do all of that, our financial advisors, which we do, I wanted to recognize, we do have our financial advisor here, Mr. Kyogas here, along with our bond counsel from Norton Rise Full Bright. We have Stephanie Libby and Matt Hill who are here.
Okay.
Metley, I'm sorry, Metley.
All right, and then the whole process should be finalized by August timeframe.
We'll actually then receive the cash. At that point in time, the sale will fund, and we will have the cash in our bank as of August timeframe.
That's, I was trying to figure that out. Thank you.
Sure.
Councilman Hunter.
Thank you, Mayor. I understand Councilman Hernandez's point of view, and he's always stuck by that, and he's been a rock on that topic. I kind of have a similar concern on the COs. I think one of the reasons we were taking advantage of it in the past is because you could get it at 0.000001% interest rate, right? Because the interest rates are so low. That's sarcasm, sorry, or facetiousness, whatever the correct term is. Why, or how do I explain to the public? Well, I guess, first of all, one, is there anything wrong with using them for what we're using them for? No, correct?
No, by law, it's allowable. The Attorney General has said that these are allowable uses of certificates of obligation.
I want to make sure before he gives me a hard time later, and it needs to be said after all the discussion earlier. Second, why are they appealing now with interest rates rising so quickly?
So actually.
Are they just the only solution?
I mean, the other, the other, other solution would be use of fund balance or cash funding.
Those are the only other solutions, right?
Exactly.
Okay. Because it does make it tough when interest rates are so high, but it was very easy when we had the, usually refinancing is either a really, really good thing or a really, really bad thing, so. Looks good to me. I guess I'm not the last speaker. I was going to second it.
Well, I'm going to change my motion.
Oh, that's right. Okay.
But I do have a question, Mayor.
Okay, well, we got a couple before you. Councilman Hernandez.
Okay, I wanted to touch on something Councilman Klein had asked about number 29 in terms of what you had mentioned with how that affects the tax rate. We have a cap of 3.5%, but it only applies to maintenance and operation. It does not apply to debt service. So by having that 3.5 million dollars applied to debt service, it doesn't count, doesn't count against our restriction of 3.5% for maintenance and operation. So when you're looking at this, you know, the state may have given us a cap of 3.5% on increasing tax rate, or, I'm sorry, not tax rate, the no new tax rate, I believe how it's, how it's stated. It does not apply to any debt service that we need to pay.
That is correct.
So by doing that, you kind of, it's kind of a shell game, in a sense, the way it's kind of structured. In this case, we, this was from a bond project in 2018 on Galahad Road. As a matter of fact, I talked to Constance about this when I was asking about it, and it went over budget considerably by 3.5 million dollars. So this is where this is coming from. I, you know, I don't like how this all kind of works in, in terms of what realistic cap is, but I just want to be very clear about that, what she was talking about with the maintenance and operation or MNO, as she referred to it as, and then debt service, which is INS.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Interest and sinking. And I will add that this was all modeled through our model. We use our financial advisors to assist, to do that for us, and so this is all modeled with the assumption of no increase on the INS side or the interest and sinking side. This all fits within our current capacity based off of our estimated growth capacity, growth estimates, and so there's, there would not, this would not need a change on the INS side.
So you're referring to new growth, not growth, not in terms of values, property values?
No, in terms of property values. So using a conservative growth estimate.
Within the 3.5% or?
Yeah, 3.5% only applies to the MNO side.
Right.
Exactly. But this would be, this was modeled so that our tax rate, as far as what the stated tax rate is on the INS side, it would not need, it would not require an increase on that side.
So you're basing it on what the published increases were from our appraisal district? I mean, where are you getting those numbers from?
No, we use a very conservative, we usually use about the 3.5% growth, so we do not, this is modeled before.
You're not even taking into consideration what was, okay. All right, thank you.
Councilman Pusley.
You can't, because they always revise their numbers down anyway. So have we, have we done the math on the, on the CO? And I know one of the COs is basically a revenue bond. It's going to be repaid by the solid waste services fees. Have we done the math, though, if we have enough room in our fund balance account, since the interest rates are higher at this point, of just paying cash and, and not doing this, borrowing the money and paying the interest rate?
That was not an analysis we did know. Even though the interest rates are a little bit higher, they still are running between 4% and 5%, which is just slightly above what we issued last year. So the minimum bond market is still relatively low historically, so.
What I would like to do when we start the budget process, Peter, is, because we've had a lot of conversation about this, and I have some of the same heartburn that other council members do about COs, and because they, not that they're not a useful tool, but they do have a propensity to be abused in certain instances, and we've seen cases of that, not here, but in other places. So I think during the budget process, this council should really look at that. Let's see where we are on certificates of obligation, and maybe we even develop a policy with respect to when and where we're going to use COs other than an emergency situation. I think that would be a good exercise for this council. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Yeah, well, and Peter, maybe in having that discussion, so we know exactly, I mean, that could range, right? It could be a very broad discussion, but, but your vision in the following year as to what you would say, you know, we'd probably use them for these, these kinds of, or I don't know if it's the dollar amount or the actual project itself, to where you can sit down with your team and look at what looks like would be a CO category versus not.
Right, yeah, well, we, well, we can do that in the budget coming up.
Okay. Wonderful. Okay, let's see, so we, you want to change your?
Yes. I want to withdraw my motion and modify it to approve items 25, 26, and 29. All right?
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, Councilman. Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. Councilman Roy? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let me hold that thought.
And then I would like to make a motion to approve items number 27 and 28.
Let me, let me open public comment on the first one. I forgot.
I thought you already did those.
Not on the first one. So is there anyone in the audience that would like to make any comment on item, items 25, 26, 29?
They all work for us, so I don't think there are gonna be any questions.
Correct. Is that right? Okay.
Correct.
There being none, there being no comment, we'll close public comment. We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no? Okay, the motion carries. Are you gonna go ahead with the next one, Councilman?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve item number 28, please.
27 and 28.
I mean, 27 and 28. I apologize.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no?
No.
No.
Who voted no? Oh, yeah, that's right. And?
Councilman Klein and Councilman Hernandez. Okay, the motion carries. Okay, so there being no further business, I adjourn this meeting.